Buenas, San Hoffa Day. Este escenario público se ha llamado a ordenar, y el momento ahora es 9:01 AM, 22 de julio de 2025. Este escenario se lleva a cabo yo misma, senadora Talu Tai Tagui, presidenta de la Comisión sobre Inversión Económica, Desarrollo Militario, Relaciones Regionales, Tecnología, Asuntos Reguladores, Justicia, Elección y Retiro. Para cumplir con la ley de gobierno abierto, las notificaciones de este escenario fueron distribuidas a todos los senadores y a los medios de comunicación a través de correo electrónico y publicadas en KuAM el lunes 14 de julio de 2024, y la segunda notificación el jueves 18 de julio de 2025. Las notificaciones de este escenario también están disponibles en el sitio web legislativo de Guam y el portal de notificaciones públicas del Gobierno de Guam. Me gustaría reconocer a aquellos que están aquí en persona y a aquellos que están viendo desde casa. Bienvenidos a vuestra legislatura de Guam. También me gustaría bienvenida a mis colegas que están aquí uniendo con nosotros hoy, senador Guma Tauta y senador Shelley Cavell. Buenos días, colegas. Colegues, la copia de los documentos que recibieron antes de este escenario puede acceder al enlace de Google Drive que fue enviado a ustedes en advance. Para el público oyente, ustedes pueden encontrar la legislación o cualquier otra información en el sitio web de la legislatura de Guam en guamlegislature.gov. Y si necesitan ayuda, por favor, hagan una llamada a la legislatura al 671 472 3462 65. Eso es 3465. Antes de empezar, me gustaría establecer algunas reglas de participación antes de este escenario público, ¿de acuerdo? Así que cuando hablen, por favor, hablen directamente al micrófono. Y para el registro, por favor, indique su nombre, posición y quien representa. Le pido a aquellos que están testificando hoy que se queden sentados ante cualquier pregunta que puedan tener mis colegas, y luego serán excusados. Le pido respeto que nos comportemos profesionalmente y respechemos la opinión de los demás. Aquellos individuos que no cumplen con estas reglas serán retirados de la sala y prohibidos de participar más. Las apoyos siguientes en la agenda de discusión esta mañana son el apoyo de Siska Hutapea para servir como miembro del Consejo de Directores y de la Autoridad Económica de Guam durante un periodo de cuatro años desde la fecha de confirmación. La segunda fue Andrew C. Park para servir como miembro del Consejo de Directores de la Autoridad Económica de Guam durante un periodo de cuatro años. Por último, tendremos a Cristina Tina D. Garcia para servir como administradora de la Autoridad Económica de Guam durante un periodo de longitud establecido por el Consejo Económico de Guam. Y en este momento me gustaría llamar a los apoyos, excepto por la señora Garcia, que tendrá usted por último. Y me gustaría, Siska, si puede venir, y, señor Park, si puede, por favor, llegue a la mesa. Ahora, ¿hay alguien aquí para testificar a cargo de estos dos individuos? Tina, ¿puede por favor venir, señor? Por favor, ¿puede venir? Por favor, venga. También me gustaría reconocer a mis otros colegas, senador Sabrina Salas Mantenani, está aquí. Buenos días, buenos días, senador. De acuerdo. En este momento, si no tienen miedo, Siska y señor Park, me gustaría que aquellos que están aquí testificaran a cargo de ustedes vayan primero, y luego escucharán usted, si no tienen miedo, ¿de acuerdo? Empezaremos desde el final aquí. Si puede, solo indique su nombre para el registro y solo presione el botón justo ahí. Vaya, presione abajo, ahí. Y luego hable directamente al micrófono como estoy haciendo ahora.
Está bien, hola.
Está bien, usted puede moverlo, sí, perfecto. Está bien, indique su nombre y quien representa, si es solo usted. Ya saben, solo vaya. Está bien, señor, presione su botón de nuevo.
Mi nombre es Jong Min Lee, y represento al señor Andrew C. Park. Entonces... Está bien, me gustaría hacer el testimonio. San Hoffa Day, honorables presidentes Talu Tai Tagui y distinguidos miembros de la comisión. Estoy escribiendo para expresar mi apoyo equivalente al reasignado del señor Andrew C. Park al Consejo de Miembros de la Autoridad Económica de Guam. Y deseo contribuir mi perspectiva, destacando sus cualificaciones excepcionales y su dedicación. He conocido al señor Park durante siete años en mi capacidad como asociado de negocios. Durante este tiempo, he sido impresionado constantemente por su profundo entendimiento del paisaje económico de Guam, su integridad inconfundible y su compromiso constante con el servicio público. El señor Park es un candidato excepcional para el reasignado, basándose en un viaje profesional e educativo impresionante. Primero llegó a Guam hace unos cuarenta años para manejar una empresa de construcción coreana. Demostrando un dedicado notable, luego perseguía y completó su Bachelor of Art en会计 y Master of Public Administration en la Universidad de Guam como estudiante mayor. Su extensa historia de liderazgo dentro de la comunidad coreana en Guam, junto con sus anteriores experiencias en el Consejo de Directores de Guam y la Comisión de Usos de tierra de Guam, lo ha equipado con un profundo entendimiento de los desafíos regulatorios y la necesidad de equilibrar intereses. Siempre esfuerza para tomar decisiones lógicas, prácticas y legales. Su compromiso con evitar conflictos de interés es commendable. El señor Park continúa su servicio, y sin duda será un activo directo de GIDA, beneficiándose directamente al pueblo de Guam y al futuro económico de la isla. Confío en que continuará ofreciendo su conocimiento independiente y sin sesgo asegurando que todos los problemas sean resueltos justamente y en concordancia con todas las leyes y regulaciones relevantes. Gracias por su tiempo y la consideración thoughtful del reasignado del señor Park.
Sujus Masi, es el señor Lee, ¿verdad?
Oh, sí.
Sí, está bien, gracias, señor Lee. Pueden ir adelante y apagar su micrófono, gracias. Y creo que esto es... El siguiente es Andy Taylor. ¿Es eso? Está bien, sí, señor, por favor, usted está reconocido, vaya.
Buenos días.
Buenos días.
Soy reverendo Andy Taylor. Estoy en la iglesia luterana de Guam. Aquí, he estado aquí solo durante aproximadamente un año, así que en agosto será un año, y así estoy testificando para Siska. Y creo que su experiencia económica y sus cualificaciones hablan por sí mismos, y mucha gente sabe de eso. Pero quería hablar más sobre ser una persona nueva aquí en la isla. Creo que esa es una de las cosas que pueden ayudar a todos con una perspectiva diferente, es que donde voy y voy alrededor como un nuevo pastor, encontrando a personas en diferentes capacidades económicas, diferentes situaciones, cuando les digo que estoy en la iglesia luterana de Guam, dicen, oh, ahí es donde va Siska, ¿no es así? Y luego, también, cuando hablamos de cosas comerciales diferentes, solo encontrando a diferentes personas, dirán, oh, sí, creo que Siska tiene algunas habilidades en esas áreas. Y ella ha sido una bendición tremenda para nuestra iglesia solo en darle su acúmulo comercial allí en la iglesia. Y así, ella es una persona maravillosa también en cuanto a su integridad. Y ella es, ya saben, una miembro constante allí en la iglesia. Y creo también que otra gran testigo de ella es que, ya saben, con el trágico paso de su esposo, aunque, ha raiseda a sus hijos, y ellos son también testigos maravillosos de la integridad y el tipo de mujer que es y cuánto ha hecho. Y así creo que esas cosas se destacan también como todas sus logros económicos. Y así creo que ella representará a usted muy bien. Y así solo quería venir y dar ese testimonio, gracias.
Muchas gracias, señor. Y en este momento me gustaría reconocer al administrador actuante, Tina Garcia, usted está reconocida.
Gracias, San Hoffa Day. Me daré un testimonio en apoyo a ambos, Siska y Andrew C. Park. Empecé primero con la señora Siska. San Hoffa Day, buenos días a nuestro senador de supervisión de GIDA, talu Tai Tagui, y a los miembros de la 38ª legislatura de Guam. Soy Cristina Tina Garcia, la actual GIDA CEO y administradora. Con mucho respeto y entusiasmo genuino presento este testimonio en apoyo al reasignado de la señora Siska Hutapea al Consejo de Directores de la Autoridad Económica de Guam. Siska no solo es un profesional calificado, sino que también es un líder visionario cuyos credenciales y contribuciones hablan volumen. Ella es una maestra de Real Estate de la Universidad de New South Wales y una Bachelors Science in Structural Engineering de la Universidad Tri-Sacate. Sus designaciones profesionales incluyen MAI, SRA, AI-GRS del Instituto de Apresuramiento, MRICS del Instituto Royal de Supervisores Chartered y RW-AC de la Asociación Internacional de Derechos. Todo lo que la hace la única apresadora en Guam con esta prestigiosa combinación de reconocimiento global. Como presidente de Cornerstone Valuation, Siska ha construido una empresa conocida por su integridad, objetividad y profunda visión del mercado. Su empresa es una fuente confiada de real estate de Guam, de deudas y de valoración. Y ha mentido a una nueva generación de apreciantes con un compromiso con la educación y la ética profesional. En GIDA, Siska ha liderado con ambas precisión y compasión. Como miembro del consejo y ahora actual presidenta, ha guiado al consejo a través de complejas iniciativas de financiación pública, ha fortalecido la supervisión de certificados de calificación asegurando transparencia y responsabilidad, ha jugado un papel clave en el plan de planificación del campus médico de Guam, ayudando a formar una visión transformadora para la infraestructura de salud, ha avanzado el desarrollo sostenible, apoyando iniciativas en aquacultura, reciclando y diversificación turística, y ha elevado la gobernanza del consejo, fomentando colaboración, planificación estratégica y participación comunitaria. Su liderazgo es marcado por humildad, intelecto preciso y un amor profundo por Guam. No solo sirve, lo eleva. Su apoyo asegurará que GIDA continúe beneficiándose de su experiencia incomparada, guía firme y compromiso inconfundible con el futuro de la isla. Gracias por su tiempo y su consideración. San Hoffa Day, nuevamente estoy aquí para presentar este testimonio con todo el apoyo para el reasignado del señor Andrew C. Park al Consejo de Directores de GIDA. El señor Park es más que solo un nombre en un rostro. Es un presente firme, pensado en mente, que trae tanto corazón y experiencia a la mesa. Desde el inicio del consejo en 2021, el señor Park ha aparecido constantemente, no solo físicamente, sino con propósito. Escucha cuidadosamente, pregunta las correctas preguntas y siempre cuida la prosperidad a largo plazo de Guam. Ya sea que estemos discutiendo certificado de calificación, planificación de infraestructura, préstamos comerciales o el futuro de la vivienda accesible, el señor Park trae claridad y calma a la conversación compleja. Lo que más admiro es su liderazgo tranquilo. No busca el espejo, pero su contribución habla volumen. Ha ayudado a GIDA a través de algunos de sus momentos más desafiantes, incluyendo los esfuerzos pospandémicos de recuperación y planificación estratégica alrededor de la iniciativa del campus médico. Su experiencia en finanzas y contabilidad le da un ojo preciso a los detalles. Pero es su integridad y espíritu colaborativo lo que lo hace tal miembro del consejo valioso. El reasignado del señor Park no es solo una continuación, es una inversión en la estabilidad, visión y progreso. He visto firsthand cómo su presente fortalece al consejo, y realmente creo que Guam es mejor para ello. Gracias por su consideración.
Sujus Masi. Y antes de pedir a los nominados que provean su testimonio, me gustaría leer en el registro que respecto al Consejo de Directores de la Autoridad Económica de Guam, deberes y responsabilidades. Los miembros del Consejo de Directores de GIDA están confiados en la guía, en la guía de dirección estratégica y supervisión de la autoridad en concordancia con el título 12, capítulo 50 del código de Guam anotado. Sus deberes incluyen establecer políticas que promueven el desarrollo económico, aprobar instrumentos financieros como los bonos gubernamentales y supervisar programas como el Programa de Certificado de Calificación que incentiva la inversión a través de beneficios tributales. Los miembros del consejo también son responsables de revisar y aprobar el presupuesto de GIDA, declaraciones financieras y actividades de préstamos, incluyendo descuentos y garantías. Playan un papel clave en la gestión de transacciones de propiedad real y el desarrollo industrial, asegurando que estos activos se usan para estimular el crecimiento económico. Además, el consejo asegura la cumplir con la ley de gobierno de Guam al llevar a cabo reuniones transparentes y interactuar con el público en iniciativas importantes. Cada miembro debe asistir a reuniones, votar en resoluciones, servir en comités y mantener estándares éticos que reflejan los intereses del público. Su trabajo colectivo apoya la misión de GIDA para fomentar el desarrollo económico sostenible y mejorar la calidad de vida de los residentes de Guam. Así que el Consejo de Directores... Todas las funciones y poderes de la corporación deben estar vestidas y ejercidas por y bajo la dirección del Consejo de Directores, que se referirá ahora como el Consejo, compuesto de siete miembros asignados por Ima Gahag and Guahan con la aportación y consentimiento de Illesla Tur and Guahan. Los miembros del consejo servirán durante un periodo de cuatro años. Ima Gahag and Guahan asignará a un miembro del consejo para servir como presidenta. Estas son algunas de las responsabilidades que estos individuos que están aquí para aplicar, o no aplicar, sino testificar que querrían apoyar este consejo y estar en este consejo a cargo del pueblo de Guam. En este momento, me gustaría reconocer al señor Park, si quisiera ir primero.
Gracias. Honorables presidentes Tai Tagui y los miembros de la comisión. Mi nombre es Andrew Chang Park. Estoy honrado de ser reasignado por el gobierno y confirmado por la legislatura de Guam para servir como miembro del Consejo de Directores de la Autoridad Económica de Guam durante el segundo periodo de cuatro años. Desde que llegué a Guam en 1985, como gerente de la empresa de construcción coreana, he vivido en la isla, trabajando como contratista general, preparador de impuestos, broker de seguros y broker de real estate. Mi experiencia en la educación en Corea se centró en economía, contabilidad y impuestos. Tuvimos otra oportunidad para estudiar en Guam, ganando un Bachelor's en会计 en 2001 y un Master's en Public Administration en 2005 de la Universidad de Guam. Anteriormente, serví como miembro del Consejo de Directores de Guam durante seis años de 2003 a 2009, y como miembro de la Comisión de Usos de Tierra de Guam durante siete años de 2009 a 2016. También serví durante los últimos cuatro años como miembro del Consejo de Directores. Durante mi servicio en Guam EPA y GLUC, encontré numerosos desafíos en presentar mis opiniones sobre temas involucrados, casos que carecían adecuados o regulaciones o normas. Por otro lado, enfrenté dilemas en pesar del derecho de los solicitantes, los conflictos de los vecinos y la necesidad de cambios o proyectos que incluían las solicitudes. En todos los casos, esforzarme por tomar la decisión más lógica, realista y visibilizada a lo mejor de mi capacidad y evitar conflictos de interés. A diferencia de estas agencias regulatorias, GIDA tiene la responsabilidad de control y supervisión centralizado y supervisión de un plan integrado para el desarrollo económico de Guam a través de sus programas y ofertas como una corporación pública, no privada. Aunque aún no estoy familiarizado con todos los detalles, puedo servir como un puente entre Guam y prospectivos corrientes de inversores para oportunidades de inversión futuras. Notamos que recientemente hubo inversiones significativas de empresas coreanas en tres golf courses y hotel. Deberíamos explorar otras oportunidades de inversión en Guam y mostrar la isla como un mercado atractivo y rentable para nuevos inversores coreanos, así como aquellos de otros países. Me gustaría contribuir más mi tiempo y energía a la comunidad de Guam. usando mi conocimiento independiente y sin sesgo esfuerzo por resolver todos los problemas en el mejor interés del pueblo y del gobierno de Guam mientras siguen todas las normas y regulaciones relevantes. Quería agradecer al comité por esta oportunidad, Sujus Masi.
Sujus Masi, señor Park, muchas gracias. Y en este momento me gustaría reconocer a Siska. Por favor, usted tiene el micrófono.
Gracias, presidenta. Buenos días, senadores, San Hoffa Day. Soy Siska Hutapea, y he fundado y es la presidenta y apreciadora de Cornerstone Valuation. Me mudé a Guam en 1999, y Guam es mi casa ahora. Me tomé a mi hija Hope, mi hija más joven Hope. Ella es una novia en la escuela secundaria. Nosotros fuimos al paro ayer, y tuvimos un momento maravilloso. Y, ya saben, después de que regresamos caminando a nuestro parque en Ganya, ella fue muy sorprendida por el espíritu de familia en Guam. Ya saben, fuimos a una sala y luego nos invitaron a una fiesta. Ni siquiera teníamos nada para traer, pero nos invitaron a la fiesta de Monte McDowell, y disfrutamos de la comida allí. Y luego descubrió que quería Mighty Purple. Y si traes una bandera, una bandera de Guam, obtendrás un descuento del 20%. Y una señora con un niño tiene una bandera de Guam, y nos robaron su bandera para obtener el descuento del 20% y la compramos Mighty Purple. Así que como solo el espíritu de familia la está sorprendiendo. Ella es capitana del equipo de fútbol nacional de Guam U-17, y siempre, siempre quería volver a Guam y vivir en Guam. Y así, con eso en mente, ya saben, estoy agradecida por mi papel como primera vez durante cuatro años como consejera del Consejo de Directores de GIDA. La Autoridad Económica de Guam lleva un papel importante en proporcionar planificación estratégica para el desarrollo económico de Guam. Creo que, ya saben, Guam puede ser tan genial. Tenemos una locación estratégica, tenemos un valor familiar muy fuerte. Y creo que si trabajamos juntos, no importa de qué parte vengamos y qué opinión diferente, es muy, muy bienvenido porque así es como puedes tomar decisiones bien informadas. Porque si solo tienes una opinión y no múltiples, entonces no exigen su opinión y no exigen su política para incluir a todos. Y así, te agradezco por la oportunidad. Y estoy dispuesta y esperando a contribuir con mi experiencia como experta en Real Estate aquí en Guam, mi experiencia como madre con cinco hijos diferentes que tiene cinco opiniones diferentes, aunque tengan la misma mamá y papá. Así que estoy acostumbrada a ser desafiada y a dar una decisión de toma de decisiones bien informada, que es lo que hago. Y la integridad es otra gran cosa que necesitamos tener porque, por supuesto, ya saben, todos vendrán con su propio propósito, con su propio plan, lo que no siempre es malo. Pero, ya saben, tenemos que adherirnos a lo que es la misión de GIDA. Y así es como, y veo eso con el señor Park. Realmente disfruto de trabajar con el señor Park. Veo eso en él también, que queríamos crear una política que se apruebe sobre cosas que van a ser buenas para Guam. Así que gracias por esta oportunidad, presidenta, senadores y vicepresidentes.
Muchas gracias, Siska. Y en este momento me gustaría abrirlo a mis colegas para cualquier pregunta que puedan tener, si no tienen miedo. Aquellos que están sentados, pueden ir adelante y devolverse a sus asientos si quisieran. ¿Hay alguien más que quisiera testificar antes? Creo que hay, sí, está bien. Solo tenemos a estos dos individuos. Tina, usted puede estar libremente, aunque está actuando, así que está bien. Voy a empezar primero con mi colega, senador Guma Tauta, según el tiempo que mostraron esta mañana, está bien.
Gracias, Madre Presidente, y gracias a Siska, y gracias, señor Park, por estar con nosotros hoy. Y voy a empezar con Siska. En realidad, si quisiera adoptarme ayer, probablemente habría usado ese Mighty Purple, porque fue muy caliente ayer. Pero solo quería decir eso para empezar. Pero solo quería empezar, ya saben, con su experiencia y pensamos en la inventoria de la propiedad de GIDA, que, ya saben, ayuda a generar ingresos para ejecutar sus operaciones. ¿Existe la necesidad de expandir más opciones de Real Estate para GIDA? ¿O piensan que solo gestionar lo que tienen es suficiente?
Creo que gestionar, porque, por supuesto, GIDA trabaja con CLTC y GALC. Y Diego está aquí, es de nuestro comité de propiedad real. Creo que con nuestra ayuda para ayudarlos a gestionar las propiedades de CLTC y GALC es suficientemente bueno, creo. Quiero decir, hablamos de crear un marca de tecnología y negocio. Y creo que esa podría ser una oportunidad que podríamos explorar porque Guam, y sé que la administradora actuante Tina sigue esto, que Guam no va a ser afectado por el tarifado. Cuán grande sería una oportunidad para tener Guam como un campo de negocios y tecnología, para tener un campo de negocios y tecnología, para tener una industria de alta calidad que pueda emplear los graduados de GCC y la Universidad de Guam con trabajos altamente pagados. Así que eso probablemente sería una vía. Pero creo que lo que tenemos ahora y lo que estamos ayudando con la gestión de GALC y CLTC con nuestra experiencia es bueno.
Gracias por eso. También solo quiero hablar con usted un poco sobre el programa QC, especialmente para la fabricación. Creo que hemos oído que el gobierno lo mencionó una vez y una vez más sobre la expansión de la fabricación 3D. Aún no ha salido del terreno. Y cuando pensamos en ese importante QC y otros, ¿es real o son solo palabras? ¿Alguna vez veremos que un QC de fabricación salga del terreno y generar trabajos para esta comunidad? ¿Desde su perspectiva?
Sí, creo que ahora estamos trabajando, la astro de la fabricación 3D está trabajando juntos con la Universidad de Colorado Mines y la Universidad de Colorado State Mines. Corregame si estoy equivocada, administradora actuante. Creo que también estamos trabajando con UOG para hacer que esto suceda.
Y saben, y aprecio todo eso. Pero creo que la comunidad, cuando hablamos de estas expansiones de estos programas o estamos dando QC's, no vamos a esperar años. Deberían estar mirando estos hoy. Y por qué lo estoy empujando tan duro es que esta economía está en un lugar donde necesitamos crecerla. Apprecito la visión filosófica de que el certificado de calificación para la fabricación puede ayudar a Guam. Pero ¿cuándo piensan que el primer golpe golpeará el terreno y podemos conseguir estos tipos de trabajos en la comunidad? Creo que ahí es donde estoy. Y creo, espero que usted pueda liderar el consejo de esa manera. ¿Puede expulsar?
En eso, senador, quiero decir, estoy con usted. Soy madre de cinco, soy acción, pero a veces se necesita tiempo para crear un entorno, una política, y las cosas necesitan tiempo, pero estoy en eso. Gracias por su comentario.
No, lo aprecio porque, Tina, usted no está en la confirmación. Su es la siguiente, hablaremos de eso más tarde. Pero cuando se trata de Siska, como usted lidera el consejo, creo que en algún momento, cuando estamos mirando estas expansiones, especialmente el programa QC, simplemente no puede ser filosófico. Tiene que ser algo tangible, porque entonces la gente viene y luego se va. Y creo que la comunidad merece, bueno, un consejo de GIDA que realmente asegure que eso va a pasar. Creo que solo, y eso es mi opinión personal. Y espero que usted, como miembro nuevo o volviendo, tenga la oportunidad de hacerlo. Si puedo, ¿puedo preguntar, señor Park? Señor Park, solo quiero decirle una vez más gracias por su servicio a la gente de Guam. Tres gobernantes han dicho que Andrew Park es un buen activo para esta comunidad y puede ayudar al consejo. Señor Park, solo quiero agradecerle una vez más. ¿Por qué quieres hacerlo una vez más? Es usted, pero lo aprecio. Señor Park, ¿puedo preguntarle, desde el mercado coreano...? Mr. Park, can I ask you, from a Korea market standpoint, is there something more that we can see outside of the construction side of the house that we can get more business opportunities from Korea to come to the US territory?
That gives some kind of, you know, memory. When I studied in University of Guam, we surveyed in the San Peters Road for tourism and plus education. So I, we called education tourism. So actually, it's, you know, it's going on such, you know, activities on Guam, especially during the summer vacation. And we have many, many, you know, Korean children here on Guam, studying in St. John's and the St. Paul's, you know, other schools too. So, I mean, you just mentioned about QC and manufacturing industry. Actually, you know, my personal opinion is not that, you know, positive on that connection. Because of the, first of all, the labor and the level of wage, you know, such things. If you consider that two factors, it doesn't fit, it doesn't much fit to Guam. But I like to expand our, you know, I mean, I wanted to draw our attention to the other way. And the banking, investment in the major Korean investment in San Peters Road, and also Fortos, and then also STX, which is Ukudu area, you know, all failed. And right after that, Korean government and all Korean companies, they didn't want to see the direction to Guam, because all failed. So I like to, you know, turn to our attention, how to, how to, how to give more opportunity and how we guide to the right direction so that they can be successful after they, you know, they put initial investment. They all, you know, put a lot of money, but they failed and they withdrew. So I like to, you know, I like to, you know, I mean, previously, whenever I met with the governors, you know, I presented my opinion for such aspects. But governor himself or herself, they cannot do all the work. So people of Guam and also senators and all other government employees, we must guide them to the direction that they can be successful once they invest their money into Guam. I think for that, I think I could be some kind of, you know, function as a bridge.
Oh, no, and I think so, Mr. Park. And so just so I can say to you, I can attest that I've been teaching at the University of Guam for just about 11 years, and there is quite a number of Korean students, especially in the intercession, that take advantage of learning at the University of Guam. It's not a secret, and maybe there needs to be more of an expansion. I also appreciate your, call it your, I don't know, your candor about the manufacturing industry as we are looking to find ways to grow our economy. And I hope that your ideas at some point will be able to yield even more for our people. And for you, Mr. Park, and to you, Siska, I absolutely stand here in support of your nomination to the GIDA board and look forward to working with you moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the time.
You're very welcome. Senator Calvo, and before she begins, I'd like to recognize Vice Speaker Tonyada and Senator Therese Trelahi, who has joined us this morning. Senator Calvo, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. Have a day in Buenos, everyone. Saying hello here and to all my colleagues. Thank you for being here. Thank you for everyone who offered their testimonies. First, I'd like to say thank you and congratulations to both Mr. Park and Siska, Ms. Siska. And I'd like to thank you both for accepting this nomination. I'd like to start with Mr. Park first, if you don't mind, Ms. Siska. Mr. Andrew, it is known here in Guam that you're one of the successful individuals and business person that actually contributed to our community. And by that, I thank you. You've employed a lot of individuals. And your expertise in not just negotiation is not, is noticed. It's very much noticeable. And I look forward, I truly do. And I know that your expertise in bringing in investors to Guam, as proven in the past, would be very helpful, especially at this point in time where we really, really, truly need to look into other options to create more revenues for Guam. Actually, that's both towards Ms. Siska and Mr. Andrew. But, Mr. Andrew, just a quick question for you. I just wanted to ask you, and I wanna hear more of what you have to offer in Guam and GIDA. And I know that you're gonna be a superb addition. Once again, can you please share an example of how you have effectively and efficiently worked with multiple agencies or departments to achieve a coordinated outcome? Either in your private or your involvement in a community or other organizations?
Involvement as a board member in many agencies gave me a lot of knowledge. And I am working, I am not, I am functioning as a counselor for the Korean community, and they ask anything. Not only for the GIDA or PUA, you know, not only the Guam, I mean, EPA issues or not only the GLC issues. Even they ask me about the, you know, legal matters and all accounting and taxation and insurance matters. So working for the multiple agencies helps me a lot for my own business purpose as well as the service to Korean communities on Guam.
Thank you for that, Mr. Andrew. Another question is, because you're a well-known businessman here and you have done a lot of business communications, connections with companies. I'd like to know, how do you plan to avoid any potential conflict of interest between your business interests and your role as a board member for GIDA?
Whenever I feel that I'm close to there, I will disclose such a thing to the world and also the council of the agency. And then I will ask for their advice.
Very good answer, sir. That's exactly what I wanted to hear, because the truth of the matter is, it is important to disclose if you have a conflict of interest, and I'm all for that. And thank you for that, Mr. Andrew. That's all I have to ask for today. But I look forward to engaging with you further. And GIDA is such an important agency for Guam. So I look forward to hearing more of the projects and things that we plan to take on moving forward. Sisus Massey, and good luck to you, sir. And I look forward to your confirmation.
Thank you.
And for Ms. Siska, Ms. Siska, everybody knows you, you're a stationary figure here in the business community. And you have contributed a lot to Guam. And without any doubt, you will be a really incredible addition, once again, for GIDA. And I like that your strength is really in about economy. You have economic datas to back up everything. And I truly believe that data is truly important, especially when we create policies. So I look forward, I thank you for accepting this one nomination, and I look forward to your confirmation and working with you moving forward. I do have some question for you, Ms. Siska. Can you please describe how your past leadership roles have prepared you to make sound decisions on land use policies and long-term development goals? I'm bringing up the land use because my dear colleague Sean already started speaking about that. Can you please fill in some more information?
Yes. So I was, my leadership role includes, I was the president of Seraptomis International of the Marianas. It's a nonprofit organization of professional women helping other women. I'm also on the board of trustee of St. John's School. I was also on the council member of Lutheran Church of Guam. Right now, I'm a treasurer. And I was also the founder and past president of Guam Women's Chamber of Commerce. And I was also a board of director of Guam Chamber of Commerce. So in my younger days, you know, when I joined an organization and a public would, you know, a member of the board of director would have a very strong opinion, very opinionated. And I know it's not based on fact. I would usually like get annoyed easily. But then, as I grow older, I understand that everybody has a different point of view. And to appreciate everyone's opinion and then compare it with the facts and going back to the mission and vision of the organization that we serve, that's how you could make a well-informed decision that would further the goal of the organization. So I always operate on, okay, what is our mission? What is our vision? And use it based on that. And of course, you know, being a mother of five too, you know, my late husband and I, we raise our five children with two, basic two pillars, which is faith and education. Because we know life can get tough, but when you have faith, you'll be strong. And the education are just a gift that keeps on giving. And I believe that. And I think those character of value, those experiences are the one that's gonna help me be able to serve as the chairman or as a board of director of GIDA.
Thank you for that answer. Last question, Ms. Siska. Being that you're very involved in a lot of organizations and community interactions within our island, how do you ensure that diverse community voices are considered in your decision-making process? And especially in development projects?
Yes. Thank you. That is a very, very good question, Senator. And I thought about it all the time. The diverse perspective, diverse need, diverse goal. And so again, I would listen and I would gather the facts. And then based on that, again, going back to what is the vision and mission of the organization, that's how I could make the informed decision. So yeah, listening and listening without judgment. You know, there's, you know, there's a lot of memes. We listen, we don't judge. We have to do that. My children taught me, humbled me to be able to do that. Because of course, as a mother, you think you know everything that is right for your children. But of course, sometimes they prove me wrong. 99% of the time, I'm right. But, you know, that 1% chance, you know, you have to be open. So keep learning is my strength, I think. And it's very important to have that, you know, spirit to keep learning. Because once you have that, then you're not close-minded and you're not, you're open to make an informed decision. So, yeah.
Thank you for your answer. So on that note, Ms. Siska and Mr. Andrew, I wish you both the best, and I look forward to your confirmation. I have, I know you guys are valuable individuals and valuable contributors to our community. And I look forward to working with both of you in the future. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Calvo. Senator Trelahi, you recognized?
Sisus Massey, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Siska and Mr. Kim, for being willing to serve again in this capacity. And I appreciate your service in the last four years. My questions are pretty much, so there's a lot of duties that are assigned to GIDA, and yet, and they're very important ones, the economic development of Guam, pretty much. And each agency to advise them financially. And how do you prioritize? Or I remember there were white papers on the different kind of industries that we should look at or ways to correct or finesse the ones that we have so that they can expand. But how do you prioritize with all the goals that you've been given? Which ones do you think in the next term of your service should be prioritized? I could ask you, Siska, first.
Thank you for the good question. Again, and you're right. I did feel, and I've expressed it a couple of times during the board meeting, that, you know, GIDA has so many roles that sometimes it felt like the agency is one catch for all, one catch for all agency. But again, going back to the mission of the organization, what is the mission of the organization? And that's how we kind of able to prioritize. Of course, we have the day-to-day operation of managing the, you know, the real estate, the industrial park, which is kind of already like an ongoing thing. We do a lot of bond refinancing and whatnot. But again, you know, we do have to do the development, economic development initiatives. We have to explore those, because that is really important. We have to do that qualifying certificate to help businesses, to help investor to come to Guam and enable us to, you know, employ the UOG and GCC graduates. So I guess the basic thing that I always go back to is what is the mission of GIDA? And that's how we learn how to prioritize. And some days, it won't happen. Some days, we'll just have to deal with the urgent things. But we always have to remember what is important.
All right. Well, right now, for example, your white paper has at least six, maybe 10 items, 13 items, yeah. And I know that the governor has her own priorities, such as aquaculture. So we've done a little bit in that. But different things. So for me, we really do, I would really like to know what the priorities are going to be for the next couple of years at least. So do you have any more specifics as far as the economic development? Like which of those pillars do you think we're going to focus on? Or is GIDA gonna play a role in furthering any of those?
Yes. So, and you're right. We did have multiple industry that we were pursuing. On the 3D manufacturing, this development is pretty promising. So we are working on that one. The SSBCI initiative, which is, which will enable the venture capital, we get $10 million on that, which will enable small businesses on Guam to get funding. That is important. So I think those three things, I would say, and providing qualifying certificate for affordable housing is really important, because without affordable housing, we don't have enough labor, which we are finding in many of the businesses in Guam. We can't find labors. So I think those are the items that I would like to see. But of course, you know, I will take this, Senator Trelahi, to our next board meeting to see what really, and as a matter of fact, when Acting Administrator Tina... to see what really, and as a matter of fact, when acting administrator Tina, when I took the chairwoman position three months ago, that's what I asked, exactly that. What is our priority right now? And so we are, you know, because we are in the middle of a lot of things. But you're right. What is important? What is, what is, what is the low-hanging fruit? So I will bring that to our next board meeting, Senator.
Appreciate that, just so we can gauge our progress.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kim?
By the way, Andrew Park.
I mean, I'm so sorry, Mr. Park. Sorry about, I'm very sorry about that. I think I was reading something else. Sorry. My apologies, Mr. Park.
It's okay.
And thank you, Mr. Park, for your willingness to serve. Yeah, my question was, I know you've been on the board for one term already, this board and many other boards. But for this board, with all its different duties assigned to it, what priorities do you think that they should concentrate on for the next couple of years?
Yeah, that's, I think that's a very complicated and difficult question to me. But I, you know, before I came to this confirmation hearing, I reviewed our GIDA's objectives. Our first objective was support private enterprise. And secondly, financing and infrastructure and economic developmental strategy and investment and incentives, public finance services, and also real property management and support film industrial development and also export promotion. Yeah, we have many objectives. And I don't, I don't think that, you know, we can put any priority right now. And we will see what will be going on in the market and economic trends. And then according to the necessity and required situation, I think, you know, I will decide timely basis.
All right. What, can you be more specific what you mean by infrastructure? You said about infrastructure? Maybe number two or three on your list?
Oh, that's one of GIDA's objectives.
Yeah, well, how do you see that?
Our infrastructure needs to be improved much. I mean, economic infrastructure. Because I mean, for that, for that infrastructure development, we need to have some kind of fund sources. And recently, legislature, I mean, I don't know who proposed, but to assess GRT tax to the, no.
To reduce the GRT, there's a proposal?
No. That is liner, liner, method of GRT assessment. And that will generate much taxes if we apply to military construction contractors.
All right. What type of financial infrastructure do you mean, or economic infrastructure? What does that mean? What is, what is that that exactly we're trying to do? Apply the taxes correctly?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Does, in the financial advising of the government of Guam, do you believe that GIDA has done a good job in advising? One of my colleagues mentioned the CLTC ancestral lands. Do you, because we get a lot of criticism of CLTC and ancestral lands not getting the value that they should be getting sometimes. Do you think that GIDA's advising capacity is working in that regard?
I think so. GIDA has been doing all the best that we could do.
All right. Siska, Ms. Hotepia?
Thank you, Senator Chirlahi. So yeah, I think GIDA has the expertise to help manage the CLTC leases. And there were some critics, but even on GIDA-owned leases, that, oh, it's too low, whatnot. But we have to remember what the mission was at the time when they signed the lease. When they signed the lease in 1970s, for example, for the industrial park, Harmon Industrial Park, or the GIDA Industrial Park in Tamuning, the intention was to develop the economy at the time. And it was successful. Harmon Industrial Park is our industrial center. The GIDA Industrial Park, we have the ITC building, we have other building in there. And so, yes, it sounded low now because I guess the growth in real estate market is faster than the growth in inflation. And so, you know, that criticism for, I think, forget the intention of the first, you know, the first lease, which is to spur the economic activity at the time. And of course, we learn better. I mean, you know, at, in the olden days, we learned from Hawaii or California that when you sign a 99-year lease, all you have to do is do a market rate right now and then increase it, you know, 10% every five years. Or, which is kind of to match the inflation of 2% per year. But now, we know more. But I think we always have to go back of what is the intention of this? You know, we, we need to give incentive for businesses to grow in the beginning and then do a fair one. And I think on the CLTC and Guam Ancestral Land Commission, there are more things that can be done. You know, if we have like more resources to do the survey of the CLTC land, you know, if we have more funding on that, we could know what the inventory of our CLTC land is. Use the, you know, low-hanging fruit, lease it to economic development so that we can have money to complete the survey for the rest and we can, we can utilize the land for the betterment of the public of Guam.
That's why I'm asking about the valuations, right? Because that was supposed to be the goal? And that's why they leased out part of their property and limited part of their inventory for commercial leases? Otherwise, the rest is supposed to go to residential leases and agriculture leases? But yeah, whether, if they're not getting full value for those leases, then they are not able to fulfill their mission either. And there've been a couple of them that have come through here that just are very under, seems very undervalued. And we've been able to push those higher. And so I just, I'm just, I think if you could just keep an eye on those things.
Sounds good, Senator.
The ITC building that you mentioned, so you believe that GIDA got the best value in its renewal of that lease?
Well, all ground leases, as you know, with your law background, it's already specified in the olden days, they already specified what was the term of the escalation. The lease agreement specify what is the rent, what is the escalation, and that is a contract. And if the contract says certain thing, we have to follow it. We can't just change it because it will give a bad faith to the other people on the other side of the contract if we don't comply with the contract. So like I said, again, you know, the escalation clause on most of the leases at the GIDA Industrial Park is a, is a certain escalation every, you know, certain years. But that is the contract that is on hand. We can't just, you know, change it to the people just because time lapses. I mean, things could go wrong, too. I mean, if, if the, if the renegotiation of the contract happens, say, for example, in 2001, when the market is so bad, the, you know, 10% increase after five years does not apply. It would be, you know, way above market. So my point is, there is an existing contract. We have to comply with that contract on what the escalation is. But of course, if we want to do, things have to be fair, both sides. Just because it's now below market, we cannot tell the investor, hey, we need to change this contract. We can't. Because there's, then there's no good faith on doing business with the government. It applies to everybody. It's not just, you know, it's not just, so my point is, of course, in the 1970s, we didn't know as much. Now we know better. But again, what is the purpose of the lease? Is it to spur the economic activity, you know? Or is it just purely for monetary gain? So there's, you know, multiple aspects. But as far as existing lease, existing contract, it's already set out the escalation, you have to comply with it. Otherwise, you know, when I appraise a property, I have to look at and summarize the lease agreement. And that's how a value of a property is defined, based on that contract. So anyway, that's my take on it, Senator.
All right. The, my last question is about the Guam Memorial Hospital. So GIDA is also supposed to advise Guam Memorial Hospital, assist Guam Memorial Hospital in its financial endeavors, and it's been very much challenged. The former GIDA director was in here the other day for confirmation for another role. But, you know, my memory goes back to when we were trying to build that maternal-child health ward, right? We renovated, it's supposed to be USDA-funded, and it fell through. It was not able to succeed. And so the former director said that was because GMH was not creditworthy or USDA did not find them creditworthy. That's the first time I'd heard that because before I had just heard that we had to put in our own share and that we were not able to get the financing for that on our, on our side. But regardless, do you think in your role in this next term that you were able to assist GMH more in, for example, the, the funding that, that your board has discretion over and it's been passing out? Is there, can some of that go to GMH? I know I tried to get that for nursing pay raises at one point, but that was objected too. But for other purposes, for example, that maternal-child health ward still needs to be built. We have an appropriation outstanding for it waiting, but I'm not sure whether that's proceeding or not. And I just want to know, I don't want GMH to be held back for anything like that when we've got financial experts at supposedly, hopefully, at its, at its beck and call. There was a contract that GIDA put out for a consulting manager for hospital administration or, and that contract was supposed to be due, the receivables, on May 19. And the word that I've received from GIDA is that's not done yet. There's still, GMH is still, you know, giving their input on it. But I feel like there's something wrong with that in the procurement process where you tell the bidders they must produce by certain dates and then they don't and they get extensions, which would be okay if all the bidders knew that. They would be able to get extensions, they wouldn't really be held to a deadline. And right now, we really need it. So I'm very much curious what your thoughts are on, on that type of thing.
We will definitely strive to do what you ask to help GMH. But we will, I will need more information on that. But regarding the last part of your question, I believe, acting administrator update us, I believe the board of GMH are, their committee is reviewing it. The next board meeting, they will approve. I think, again, going back, of course, I'm a consultant, too. I think it's good to have the stakeholder give the input so that the study becomes like a, the study becomes really, really useful. And it's good to have the input from the stakeholder, which is the GMH. And I think their board is postponing until end of this month, I believe. And it should be, once they, once they have their input, we will ask the consultant to finalize it and we will get the report to you, Senator.
All right. Well, thank you. Mr. Park, any other final comments?
I don't have any further.
All right. Sisus Massey, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator Chirlahi. Senator Sabrina Salas-Metanani, you're recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Siska and Mr. Park, for your willingness to serve on the GIDA board and continue serving our community. I did want to follow up on a couple of things that the previous speaker mentioned regarding the Guam Memorial Hospital because it's an issue that the two of us have been talking about regarding this professional services agreement, which was signed in February of 2025. And according to that agreement, it gave 60 days for the draft and 90 days for the final approval, which, as she mentioned, would have been May. And so it's been already, it's going to be two months. And so I'm just kind of curious, how do you, as board member, and Tina, since you're here as well, how do you hold these people accountable? Because they're already way past due turning in these reports and complying with this contract.
Thank you, Senator Metanani. So like I said, I was informed by the administrator that the stakeholder would like to give an input. And, and I think it's very important for, coming from a consultant point of view, I think it's very, very important to have the GMH give their input and before we finalize the report. But we will, I will talk to the administrator on when that board meeting is supposed to take place because the GMH, I guess, require that from their side. But I will follow up with the acting administrator on, you know, the status of this contract and get it back to you.
Thank you. And I only ask this and I, you know, and, and put some pressure on this because the information that we can gather from this analysis, it really is crucial as we move forward and looking at different options to help GMH, in particular, the PPP initiative. So as soon as we can get that, I'd really appreciate it. The other thing I wanted to, to ask about is, and maybe just for the viewing public, is the GIDA board's involvement in the construction of the new hospital. And again, both of you have been with the GIDA board. And so, Mr. Park and Siska, if you could kind of tell us your role thus far? And also your position on the construction of a new hospital and its location?
So on our board meeting, we received report from the committee and update us on the status of the project. So that's what we basically, you know, assist them if they have questions about matters, which we haven't really had any much discussion on our board meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Park, but we haven't really have much discussion except that we have the role to manage the ARPA fund to create, not to create, to build the infrastructure part of the hospital. So yeah.
Frankly saying, I'm not familiar with hospital issue very much, except that I read, you know, articles in the newspaper. Taking this opportunity, I will put more attention to hospital issue and try to make anything better than, or the best situation for, for the hospital issue.
Thank you, Mr. Park. And just one other question, Siska, since you are so knowledgeable at Guam's real estate industry, its landscape, what are your thoughts, I guess, on, on this new hospital being proposed to be built? Or not even proposed, but good, as we know right now, being built in Mingila?
In the recent years, there's not many development that can be done along Route 15 because Route 15 don't have sewer. And Mingila is the fastest-growing population, based on the census. And so the ability to have sewer in there. And so the ability to have sewer in there, as you are aware, Senator, and probably Senator Chalahi too, if you have sewer and in your R1 zone, you could build a house on a 456-square-meter land instead of having to build it on an 1858-square-meter. So I think it will help the growth of Mangila as the fastest-growing municipality, because I think, because there's universities there. And so I think it will open up. And also, there's multiple returned land in there, just like in Route 3. In Route 3, there is also Route 3 vicinity. As you can see, there's so many development there. There are many, many lands that are being returned from the federal government in Route 3 vicinity. And what happened was, I know Dan Swayville spearheaded the zoning of that area, the Dos Amantes Planning Area. There are some utilities already existing in there, and we can see the growth of Route 3 right now. So what I see in the future, if there is this development, and I know GIDEA is helping to build the infrastructure in Mangila, I think it's gonna help the growth in Mangila and kind of like spread the development activities. So, yeah, that's what I see from a real estate point of view.
And just one last question. Both of you, previously serving on the GIDEA Board and other government boards, what example of policies, initiatives, demonstrating your leadership that you can say has been successful?
So I can't like say that we have individually, we, you know, what should I say? We successfully do something individually, but I think collectively as a board, because during the board meetings that we have every month, almost every month, you know, we all have our different opinion. For example, our Vice Chairman June, you know, he would come up with a report on our investment. And then we would like say, hey, have you looked at this site? And Mr. Park will give his input. So I don't know if there's particular, at least nothing that comes on top of my head right now. I mean, I did put my two cents about the building permit in Guam, because I deal with a lot of investor that, you know, locally, local investor and island investor. I did put forth the importance of having the building permit. And I know Lieutenant Governor Justin Norrie is working on it, but unfortunately, it's now stuck in procurement, unfortunately, to finish this. But, you know, we all, so like for my side, what I contribute is my knowledge in real estate, my knowledge in meeting with the investor and the development. And right now, I can't think of, on top of my head, what I individually, you know, successfully done by myself. I can't think of it, sorry.
It's okay. Mr. Park?
I think for the last four years, it was COVID period. And it was very impressive that all the staffs and administrator, together with the board members, worked very hard for supporting the program by implementation of all federal aids, like PUA, PPP, and all that funds funded by federal government and properly distributed, processed and distributed to Guam enterprises and also the individuals.
Thank you for your responses. And again, thank you for your willingness to serve our community. And I look forward to reviewing and acting on your nominations.
Thank you, Senator Bree. And Vice Speaker, Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to the nominees for the Board of Directors for Guam Economic Development Authority. I think just to follow up on Senator Metanani's, Salas' questions on the hospital location and funding and that sort. Ms. Hafteya, on your, in your, with your expertise in real estate, would you have recommended that piece of parcel to a private developer for the construction of a hospital?
So as, you know, as a professional expert, in order for me to come up with a professional opinion, I need to have the facts. And I don't have it right here right now. But just talking as the board of GIDEA, there are, right now, in along Route 15, we have, obviously, it's in close proximity to the university. It's in close proximity to Dededo and Barigada, which are also the other most populated. And the availability of land in there that you could get at a very, you know, reasonable prices. And if you need a big parcel of land, I would suggest my investor to look around Route 15, because there's a lot of former federal excess land that are located in there and in Route 3 vicinity, because of the availability of land at a very, very good price. I mean, if you, you know, the most recent sale of land, say in Tamuning, if it's commercial zone, $445 a square meter. A cliffland parcel across from Kmart sold, and it's $445 a square meter. On the other hand, on Route 3 vicinity, the one that is along Route 3, one transaction of a commercial zone lot, similar, so apple-to-apple, an investor about four months ago recently acquired it for only $132 a square meter. So there's a big discrepancy. So I guess the question is the availability of land. There's not much in dense population like Tamuning. There's not much availability, and the price will be a lot. So I guess, you know, just from that point of view, yes, I would suggest that. Of course, if it's private developer, like I said, Route 15 does not have infrastructure. They don't have sewer. It's gonna be a lot to bring in the infrastructure. So in a way, the development of hospital along Route 15 helped spur the activity in that area. So, yeah. That's, but again, as a professional expert, I cannot like, you know, but that's, that's my opinion, is from my opinion as a, you know, Board of Director of GIDEA.
I see. But was it the board, was it the GIDEA Board that recommended the selection of the sites to the governor for the hospital location?
I don't believe we do. And if I did, then maybe I wasn't in that board meeting. I don't believe we do.
Okay. So then, the property there that with its, with the sinkholes, would that be a viable location to have a hospital built at?
Well, again, we need to look at the fact. Where is the sinkhole located? The parcel is big, you know. Where is the sinkhole located? Is, can you build around the places that's not, that doesn't have sinkhole? So again, I need to see the facts on where that sinkhole is actually located and if you could build. I mean, engineering will have, you know, engineering will have a study to do. And I would think they wouldn't, I was a structural engineer before. I would think they wouldn't want to build on top of the sinkhole. But I would hope the professional that is involved in the project would have a study on that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Park, being, having background in construction, I assume, would you build a hospital in that type of setting, knowing that there are sinkholes located on that property?
As Siska just mentioned, I think it will cost a lot of money for construction of infrastructure, because as everybody knows, there is no sewer in Route 15. And, yes, if government will construct a new hospital there, that will contribute to the equalized development in that area comparing with the Tamuning area. But I think, this is my personal opinion, and I never heard of GIDEA's decision on the location of a hospital. But considering the current economic situation, I would prefer to locate it in Tamuning. This is my personal opinion, not GIDEA's.
I see. So the remaining funding of the ARPA funds that was set aside for the hospital, what is the balance on that? I believe it's like $130 million, is that correct?
I was talking to the Acting Administrator, maybe last week. I believe that is the number, around that number.
About $130 million. So what happens to that funding if soil is not turned within, I think the expiration date on that ARPA funding is December 2026, am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So what happens to that funding if soil is not turned within that time?
I think the funding is only to bring in the infrastructure. So that won't, you know, that won't depend on the, on the, on the actual project itself. It's just to bring in the infrastructure, GPA, GWA, to the location.
So has GIDEA released any fundings as of this date for that infrastructure that you say is supposed to be?
Not to the best of my knowledge, but I believe they're working with GPA and GWA, and I believe they have weekly meeting to make sure that it happens.
Oh, okay. Well, that's the only questions, actually, I had. And I had one more for you, Siska, and that's the, you know, you were talking about earlier on the tariffs where Guam is, you know, we're actually in a great position where the tariffs don't really affect us. And, you know, and earlier I introduced a piece of legislation, Bill 174-38, which creates a free trade logistic zone here on Guam. And have you had an opportunity to read that bill? No?
No, I have not, Senator, but I would love to hear it, because that would be great.
Yeah, absolutely, if you can. Like I said, the bill is 174-38. And it actually gives GIDEA a part to play in actually developing, locating zones that would be viable for this free trade zone here on Guam. And I think it's very beneficial to Guam that we can actually spur economic development and also see what we can do to, you know, increase our visibility as one of those areas that, you know, tariffs really don't affect us here, coming from Asia. So it's something that perhaps maybe you can look into, and hopefully, we'll have the public hearing soon and be able to testify on that piece of legislation.
Thank you, Vice Speaker Ada. And thank you for your foresight to look into that. And I will, I will look into your bill. But yes, I think, you know, it's very important for us to be able to identify the zone. But also, all the problem of any development in Guam, real estate development in Guam, always comes back to the infrastructure. If you don't have infrastructure, I know a lot of local families own parcels of land, but it does not have infrastructure, so they can't build on it. And once you have infrastructure, you will empower the local to be able to build on their land. And, you know, there's a lot of returned land in Route 3. And you could see, because there's some area that has infrastructure, you could see immediately development happen. In Route 15, not so much yet, but there are new Shell gas station in there. There is, you know, new industrial park in there. Just for example, being able to bring in infrastructure, there's a 55 lots industrial park on Route 3, because the private developer bought the land very affordable. It's less than $20 a square meter, and they put all the infrastructure. After he put in all of the infrastructure, which is super costly, he was able to sell the lot for like $250 a square meter. And so that's how expensive the infrastructure is. But I think the other thing, if I may, you know, my public service announcement is for us to help bring in infrastructure to Guam. And I will, as in my capacity as a Board of GIDEA, member of the Board of GIDEA, I will spearhead that. Because the best thing that we could do, especially during this military buildup period, is to, you know, we hurt one Guam. How great would it be for military to help us build this infrastructure for the people of Guam? That's how you help people. You empower them, to enable them to build for themselves, and not just, you know, hand out money, but empower us to build our island. And I think both the military, federal government, and the people of Guam will benefit tremendously from developing infrastructure. So thank you, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Siska. And I look forward to the committee chair moving your nominations forward so that we'd be able to vote on it and hopefully address it this session, if not then the next session that we are. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity.
You're very welcome, Vice Speaker. We have one more nomination for Administrator, and then we have Bill 77-38 to move forward. So I'm gonna make my comments very short. Usually, I'm very long-winded, you know, when it comes to this. But as the Oversight Chair, I have great respect in the people who work at GIDEA, because I used to work there. And I know that everyone that are there is very hard-working individuals. They're very forward thinkers, and I appreciate everyone there. So as board members, when you work with GIDEA, I'm pretty sure you get answers right away, you know, if you need that. So, Mr. Park, I've known you for many years, since, ever since, and appreciate you always coming up to me, not afraid to ask me questions yourself. And I expect you to continue to do that, even in this capacity. As well, Siska, yourself, I appreciate all that you're doing, not just for the island of Guam, but actually for helping individuals themselves that need help, because I know you do some humanitarian stuff as well, and I greatly appreciate that. The only thing I ask of the two of you is a couple of things that have been a real stickler on, and that's transparency. And I'd like to make sure that the board minutes, which I've noticed on the website, is only up to March. Did you guys not have a meeting in April, May, or June? Did you not have a meeting?
We did have meeting.
Okay, it's not on the website. So please make sure your website is up to date, weekly. You know, people need that information. It's not just us, you know, being transparent, but there are investors who really rely on your website to see what's going on. And believe it or not, the first thing these investors look at is actually your board minutes to see what the board is discussing and what their intentions are. The other one is, please, don't be a rubber stamper. Be an individual. We're sitting up here, putting you in this position to make decisions based on your experience, your expertise, and most especially, your moral and ethic duty to the people of Guam. The people of Guam is who you serve. I mentioned earlier about what the board's requirements are. So please, if you have any concerns or any, you know, shenanigans that are happening there, my door is always open, you know, in confidence. Please come and see me, okay, if there's anything I can do. Lastly, I ask that, I know you have a project already with Senator Chalahi that you're seeing, and I'm asking that you incorporate as well. The military buildup contracts. When I was at GIDEA, there was actually a section in GIDEA that followed these military contracts, who it was awarded to and how much it was awarded, if there were subcontractors. That was back in 2007, oh, no, even further back, 2016, when this was going on. So I think GIDEA and BSP need to work very closely together, Siska and Mr. Park. Especially, Mr. Park, you know what's going on on the construction- Especially, Mr. Park, you know what's going on on the construction side. Find out because we need information to find out how much of this military buildup funding that's coming here for these companies to have the privilege to come on this island to do work and capturing the taxes. So if you can put that in your, you know, to-do list at the top, I greatly appreciate. Other than that, I appreciate your time and definitely greatly appreciate that you want to take the time to serve on this very, very important board. And that being said, there's no more testimony for Mr. Park and Siska. You may be excused. And now we're going to move over to our next nominee. You can be excused. Our next nominee is for, and this nominee is for the administrative position for the Guam Economic Development Authority. And at this time, I would like to call those who would like to testify. And please be conscious, we have a time because we have some other, another bill coming up. But if you would like to come and testify, I ask that you come, please step forward and onto the table. Okay. And I do want a note for the record that we have quite a bit of people here testifying in support. Christina D. Garcia, which we all fondly call her Tina, so that are here today to testify. And these names will be in the record for her confirmation so people can see who those who testified. And at this time, we're going to start with the beauty of the table right here. And we're going to have her come and testify first. Please state your name for the record. Directly speak into the microphone. It is flexible, so you can move it back and forth and tell you where it's comfortable for you. And then you can go. Go ahead. You are now recognized, ma'am. Please state your name for the record and who you're here for.
Madam Chairman, is it all right if I just want to clarify something? The usage of the word hoodlums in my testimony, this one, it described my late son Sean and his friends when they were 16, 17, 18. So you know what? Crazy people. Honorable Telo Taigui, Chairman of the Committee on Economic Investment and 38th Guam Legislative Congress, beauty. Wait just a minute. You know, when you're old, everything goes crazy. I couldn't even stand it, and here I had to go out, to thaw out because it was too cold. Okay, it's a testimony for Tina Garcia as administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority. My name is Angelita Mendiola. I am here to testify in full support of the appropriate appointment of Christina Tina Garcia to be the administrator for the Guam Economic Development Authority. I'm a long, long-time retired school administrator for the Department of Education. I have been retired for so long that many of my elementary school students are now even retirees themselves. And I'm also proud that many of them are also Guam Department of Education retirees. And most of all, too, a farmer. I'm not too often that I come up to provide testimony myself because I'm getting a little too old for this kind of things. My active time in participating in government of Guam matters was in the late 70s and 80s. But I'm here today because I wanted to personally express how much faith I have in the next generation. And from my point of view, everyone in here, younger than 70 years old, are still kids for me. I've known Tina since the 80s when she was still the, her husband Jesse Garcia's girlfriend. So maybe like maybe 40 or more years ago. Jesse Garcia is one of the group of boys who was very close to my late son Sean and who I had the pleasure of being like a second mother to. All these boys were a bunch of crazy hoodlums. Tina was not like any of these boys at all, which is a good thing because ever since then, she was studious, responsible, and stable. Nothing at all like the boys eating at my house at all odd hours of the night. Throughout my whole life, I've always seen that behind every successful man, there's always a strong woman, right? I am proud to say that this 17- and 18-year-old hoodlums boys turn out to be respectful, responsible, productive, and outstanding members of our community. They are Jesse John Garcia, of course, John Shimizu, Tom Shimizu, Jeff Ludwig, and my late son Sean. They have all grown into men that I feel blessed to have in my life. And as many of you have seen, Jesse's a very outstanding and reliable boy who has done so much for our island and our family. And why is he such a good boy now? Anybody guess? It's because he has a strong, dedicated, and responsible girl like Tina. I don't need to go over her resume. You would all have that to speak for itself. With the years, she's been working at GIDA already. She has gained institutional knowledge of the operation. Throughout her life, Tina worked hard in getting her education, working, raising a family, supporting their kids all the way through school. And she did this while she was still Jesse and putting up with my son and all their crazy friends. I understand she also worked harmoniously and effectively with the former boss Melanie Mendiola and others before. She faces challenges with dignity and grace. In short, Tina worked hard for so many years, doing so much for all of the people of Guam. Being a good and respectful girl, a good student, a good wife, a successful and educated professional, and a good mother. These are just some of her qualified qualities that make her qualified to head an agency such like GIDA. It's because of these things that she truly understands the need of her people and how much patience, work, and dedication it takes to make life better bit by bit. In closing, I have great faith that Tina Garcia is an ideal person to be the head of GIDA. I pray the legislature also would agree and vote to confirm her as well. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this testimony in full support of Christina Tina Garcia as the head of GIDA. With respeto, se sus masi.
Be with it. Thank you so much, Ms. Mendiola. That's a great testimony. I haven't heard one of these ones that just bring, you know, a smile to your face in quite some time when you're hearing a testimony from an individual. So adonkulu se sus masi. Thank you. Sorry about it being cold, but, you know, I'll ask them.
You know, when you're old, just go crazy. Everything go crazy in your life.
That's right, right? We don't care, we just do what we want. That's right. You deserve, whatever comes your way, you totally deserve it.
So my advice is don't get old, okay?
Adonkulu se sus masi. Okay. And at this time, I'd like to go with Ricky, if you, oh, yes. Okay, so we'll start with Doreen, right?
Yes.
Hello? Hello? Yes, please go ahead. You're recognized.
Okay. Hafadeh, Honorable Chairperson Senator Telo Taigui, is seeing members of the committee and fellow senators. My name is Doreen Crisasamo Munia, GIDA board member. First of all, I want to say that I do support my colleagues, Ms. Siska and Mr. Andrew, for their appointment in the board. I am also in strong support of the appointment of Mrs. Christina Diego Garcia as the next CEO/Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority. For over 25 years at GIDA, she has consistently demonstrated extraordinary dedication, vision, and effectiveness in advancing Guam's economic growth and diversification. As a public finance manager since 2015, she has played a central role in organizing and overseeing 59 government debt financing totaling 5.9 billion, a critical funding that supports infrastructure, education, and community programs. Notably, she led the development of the government of Guam's first bond disclosure policy and proactively updating it to meet the evolving requirements of federal regulation. She collaborated with the Port Authority on its first revenue bond issuance, which achieved the highest bond rating ever secured by GovGuam. Mrs. Garcia has advanced initiatives that directly benefit businesses and families. She revitalized GIDA's loan program, closing 16 new loans after years of inactivity and spearheaded Guam's first 10-million venture capital program under the State Small Business Credit Initiative. She also secured a technical assistance grant to support local entrepreneurs. Her leadership in managing the 81.5-million childcare grant program under the CARES and the ARPA initiative has provided essential resources to businesses and families across the island. Additionally, the board recently updated its agriculture development fund program, and she has begun collaborating with the Department of Agriculture to support local farmers. I look forward to her leadership on this initiative. Equally important is her commitment to professional development. She is dedicated to lifelong learning and staying current with best practices in public finance and economic growth. She actively participates in specialized national training through the Government Finance Officers Association, the CDFA National Development Finance Summit, the SSBCI compliance training. The ongoing engagement ensures that she is well-informed about the emerging trends, federal compliance standards, and innovative financial tools. This expertise that will strongly support GIDA's mission and protect the integrity and the transparency of its work. Throughout her career, including roles as the Acting Deputy Administrator, Financial Services Manager, and Business Development Manager, she has combined deep institutional knowledge with the ability to build partnership across the government, public, private sector, and community organization. Her leadership has proven record of delivering results make her uniquely qualified to lead GIDA. For these reasons, I am committed to supporting her throughout her tenure as a CEO/Administrator, and I'm confident that her leadership will foster sustainable economic growth for Guam. I respectfully ask for your support and that of this body for her appointment as the CEO/Administrator of GIDA. Se sus masi.
Thank you so much, Doreen. Mr. Hernandez, we'll have you go next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Testimony addressed to the, of course, yourself, Madam Chair, Telo Taigui, Senator Telo Taigui, Committee on Economic Investment, Military Buildup, Regional Relations, Technology, Regulatory Affairs, Justice, Elections, and Retirement. Hafadeh, good morning, Madam Chair and Senators. My name is Artemio Ricky Hernandez, and I currently serve as the Deputy Executive Manager of the Guam International Airport Authority. I appear before you today in my personal capacity, speaking as someone who has had the privilege of working closely with Christina Tina Garcia in a professional setting for many years. Before joining the GIAA, I served as the Deputy Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority, where I directly worked with Tina on public finance initiatives aimed at addressing our island's critical infrastructure needs. Before, even before my time at GIDA, while working at the Guam Legislature's Office of Finance and Budget, I had already heard of Tina Garcia's expertise in the field of bond financing. Her reputation preceded her, and when I finally had the opportunity to work alongside her at GIDA, I was eager to learn from someone with such a deep command of this highly specialized area of government finance. Tina's generosity in sharing her knowledge, not only in public finance, but in the broader areas of economic development, has made a lasting impact on me professionally and on many others she has mentored and worked with throughout her career. Her decades of experience representing Guam in the capital markets and to investors is unmatched. As GIDA's former public finance manager, she has played a key role in telling Guam's story, highlighting our economic resilience and potential to both national and international stakeholders, such as investors and credit rating agencies. Since I transitioned to the airport, Tina has continued to be an indispensable partner. She has been instrumental in the refinancing and restructuring of the airport's bonds and has worked tirelessly to help us navigate ongoing financial challenges, especially as we continue to face lower-than-forecasted passenger volumes. Her approach is always collaborative, thoughtful, and solutions-oriented. She never looks for excuses, only ways forward. Tina Garcia's leadership is grounded in decades of experience, deep institutional knowledge, and a true commitment to public service. I am confident that under her guidance, GIDA will continue to play a pivotal role in advancing sustainable economic growth for Guam. For these reasons, I will wholeheartedly support her appointment as Administrator/CEO of the Guam Economic Development Authority, and I respectfully urge this body to do the same. Se sus masi for the opportunity to provide this testimony, and thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ricky. And next, saving the best for last, my favorite person, Mr. Gourmet Guam. You are now recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and distinguished members of the 30th Guam Legislature. I thank you. I initially didn't plan on providing any testimony for what I believe is a given, but I have many family members off-island currently watching the live stream. They say, Joe, get up there, get up there, what are you going to do? So I was putting things together last minute, so please bear with me. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here in full support of my sister Tina Garcia and her nomination to lead the Guam Economic Development Authority. We come from a family of eight siblings, the children of Jose D. and Annie M. Diego. We have many family members abroad currently watching the live stream, as I mentioned before. Amongst us, Tina has always been the voice of reason. She is deeply compassionate and empathetic, but don't let that fool you. She also is fierce when it comes to doing the right thing for the family. Tina has never hesitated to speak the truth, even when it's uncomfortable and even when it's something no one else wants to say, but has to be said. That's not an easy role to play, especially with many siblings and a lot of character and personalities, especially when you're the fifth child with three older siblings and four younger ones. Let me share a personal story. Years ago, growing up, a heated argument between my brother and I escalated into a fistfight, like many siblings. Tina stepped in, literally, and put herself in the middle of our fight, and we both respected her enough to stop right then and there and talk things out. That moment has always stuck with me. It showed me Tina's courage, her leadership, her willingness to stand in the fire instead of watching from the sidelines. That quality has defined her ever since. I also want to acknowledge what I believe would be a historic moment. Tina's appointment would mark what I believe is the first time that GIDA is led by someone who has risen from the agency and not brought in from the outside. That means something and will only serve to benefit the agency. Also, as an older brother and as a business owner alongside my wife, I would sometimes learn about GIDA's programs from the media or third parties. I called Tina and asked, "Why didn't you tell me about this?" So I can get an early jump. And every time, she would remind me of the ethical boundary she upholds, even though I know that every time I call her about this, I know what the answer would be, but I keep asking anyway. So that speaks to her ethical conviction to the position. That's the kind of integrity this role demands. I can personally testify of her unwavering commitment to ethical practice and transparency. Tina is ready, not just because of her experience, but because of her heart, her principles, and her leadership. I urge you to confirm her appointment. Thank you, and se sus masi.
You're very welcome. Thank you so much for testifying. You may be excused, and at this time, I'd like to bring the nominee forward. There's nobody else here to testify. And while she's settling in, I'd like to read this. The Guam Economic Development Authority Administrator Duties and Responsibilities. The administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority is responsible for managing and implementing the authority's programs under Title 12, Chapter 50, Guam Code annotated. Key duties include: Application Management: Established procedures for receiving, reviewing, approving applications to GIDA programs. Applicants must Applicants must be notified of the decisions within 15 days of the submitting a complete application. If denied, a written explanation must be provided within three days, and an applicant may appeal under 50308. Secondly, Program Assessment: Conduct and submit an annual assessment of programs to the Speaker of Elsas Turenguahan within 60 days after the fiscal year's end. This report must include the number of applicants, recipients, funds distributed, current balance, and analysis of the program's alignment with legislative intent. Third, Public Transparency: Publish the same program data and analysis on GIDA's website within 60 days after the fiscal year's end. I think that was five, so, okay, hold on. Four, Review Criteria: Development criteria for evaluating and approving applications in line with the law's intent. Five, Outreach and Promotion: Promote the program and publish information about its benefits and requirements, especially for small and mid-sized businesses. These are some of the requirements of the Administrator, along with other things that you can see on, we just pulled some of these from the Guam Code Annotated under 50303 Administration. So at this time, I would like to yield the floor to the nominee for Administrator for the Guam Economic Authority, Christina Tina Garcia. You are now recognized.
Thank you to our GIDA chairperson, Senator Tele Tidigui, and thank you to the members of the 38th Guam Legislature who are here to consider my nomination. Again, my name is Tina Garcia, and I'm here to testify on my nomination as the CEO and Administrator at the Guam Economic Development Authority, also known as GIDA. I'm here today with my husband of 38 years, Jesse Garcia, along with my children, my grandchildren, members of my Diego and Guamatata family, and very close friends and relatives. I want to express my deepest appreciation to Governor Luís León Guerrero, Lieutenant Governor Joshua Tenorio, and the GIDA Board led by former Board Chairman David John for their confidence and trust in recommending me for this position. I also want to give a great shout-out to the hard-working staff and management of GIDA, who are excellent and wonderful public servants. At this time, I'm going to give you a brief background of my work experience, both in the private and public sector. Besides starting my work with our family business, Rainbow Center, my professional careers started at DFS Guam, where I worked there for 10 and a half years, starting as a merchandise assistant and then working my way up to a buyer for the new Tumon DFS Galleria store, as well as working with the main Saipan stores, hotel, and airport stores on Guam and Saipan. Those job responsibilities included preparing annual budgets, setting financial and sales goals, and preparing performance reports. Also worked with my team to track movement of inventory, prepare marketing campaigns, and to measure key performance indicators. At DFS, if you didn't meet your sales goals, you got your butt kicked and chewed out, so we made sure we did our best. With GIDA, I started my government career 27 years ago as an industry development specialist, gaining experience primarily in processing qualifying certificates for captive insurance, trusts, and tourism businesses. During this time, I also worked on the very complex Guam Regional Medical Center, QC, working closely with various stakeholders and medical professionals to achieve a successful result. I worked my way up to the position of industry development managers over the years, assisting the executive and legislative branch with trade missions, legislative policy creation, and business development programs and initiatives. In the Public Finance Division, I was faced with immediate challenges as the 9/11 event occurred two days after I joined the division. This event closed the municipal market for a week and left the island's ability to approach the market vulnerable to losses and major disruption. Despite this, and then learning from the various challenge, the market came back, and I was able to take part on my first bond sale in December 2001. Since then, I facilitated in almost every bond or loan transaction, and we are working on to this at this moment with Guam Waterworks and with the BPT bond refunding for savings. In my past, I also worked as an Acting Deputy Administrator capacity for a few administrators at the request of the administration at that time. I worked closely with our accounting division to complete, one of my challenges was working with the accounting division to complete the GIDA audit as our accounting manager was on a six-month military duty, and so that really taught me a lot about accounting and financing, and as well as overseeing general GIDA operations. Today, I'm privileged to step into this position after former GIDA CEO and Administrator Melanie Mediollo, who led our team through some very tough situations. She pushed us to think outside of the box and encouraged us to work smarter. If confirmed as the CEO and Administrator, I want to continue the good things GIDA has accomplished in the past, and I've set forth certain priorities and opportunities to support economic activity and promote small businesses. These include: Working to continue to diversify and grow Guam's economic base through planning and implementation of programs; To foster the development of new and emerging industries; Some of these task items here is to conduct studies; To support initiatives such as Headnote 3A, Tech Part Feasibility Study, and so on. Secondly, I want to manage existing GIDA properties and work to obtain new properties to improve and create favorable business conditions to include a possible technology or manufacturing part. We want to continue to review leasing opportunities and investment for existing properties. We want to work with the land agencies to maximize use of existing government properties. Thirdly, I want to strengthen GIDA's role as central financial manager of the government by improving and enhancing our investor relations. We want to improve our bond website so we can have continued transparency for those stakeholders, provide regular updates on key initiatives, and improve information presented. We want to work to improve our bond debt profile reporting, especially to all our stakeholders. Fourth, I want to promote and encourage the expansion and development of markets for Guam's small businesses and products. We want to continue to secure federal grant funds for expanding export or investing in small business and creating opportunities for Guam product development. Fifth, and most importantly, I want to elevate fiscal accountability, ensuring that every investment made, every incentive granted or coming through GIDA reflects a rigorous cost-benefit analysis and accountability to our people. In conclusion, our economy faces several challenges: A recovering tourism industry, a bustling military buildup, global inflation, federal policy uncertainty. But I view these as opportunities to make changes, to pivot and to innovate. Under my leadership, GIDA will be both a supporter of Guam's economic stability and a catalyst for transformation. I am grateful and humble for your consideration, and I pledge to you to serve with integrity, diligence, and an unwavering commitment to the people of Guam to make our island better. Sincera menti and viva liberation Guam. Thank you.
Viva. Thank you so much. Colleagues, her testimony is in, I think we have, do we have a copy of her testimony on the Google Drive? No, we don't.
I will send it to you.
Okay, is there any chance we can make a copy of what you have there?
Sure.
Is that okay, or did you scribble on that?
I did a little bit of scribbling, but it's readable.
Okay, it's very helpful to have, can we go ahead and get copies for the committee here of the testimony? It's very helpful so that, you said quite a bit, because GIDA covers so much, so much, that, I mean, between public health being such a huge entity with, you know, different arms everywhere, GIDA does about the same thing, everything from rentals to overseeing other agencies, so I'm going to take that and have my colleagues look at it so they can have more questions. But before I turn it over, I'd like a few questions of my own for you. Tina, first, thank you for taking this. We worked together at GIDA at once upon a time, many, many years ago, and I can't tell you how appreciative I was and how you made me feel, very comfortable, especially when I had 50 gazillion questions, you know, it was, it was always going to your office, knock, knock, yeah, I have a question. I know you probably got so irritated because I had so many questions and learning what GIDA was all about, and there's definitely one person who's been there so long that you know everybody's job, what they do there, and how to continue to bring transparency to GIDA. I'm just concerned, I just want to make sure that, you know, in this new role that you're going to take on, it's for the people of Guam. You know, you're there to give the best bang for the buck for the people's land and whatever funding there is, on behalf of the people, that you make the right decisions. I think you will, because I've seen you in situations where you say your piece and then you walk away and just, those who are in higher being do what they want, but you at least say your piece. So with some of the questions, I know you were scribbling down on your notes, the questions we were asking the appointees for the board, and I'm pretty sure you're going to be answering a lot of that, and all of my colleagues go ahead and ask their questions, but I have a couple of my own with regards to something I brought up and asked Mr. Park to take it upon himself on the military buildup. I appreciate, I did reach out to you and I shared that with my colleagues regarding the spreadsheet on military contracts and how much it is, but, you know, it is an outdated one, so if you can, please continue with that. I mean, what is your position as far as trying to find that information, because we've tried REVEN Tax, and then we're hearing that BSP is also working and trying to find something, but what is your recommendation as far as like GIDA's concerned? Because once upon a time, GIDA did do this, gathering this information for the military buildup.
Yes, thank you, Senator. It's funny, because we've been trying to also get our hands around that. As you know, we are constantly requested by different stakeholders, both tied to our bonds, our credit rating agencies, and they are also very curious about the level of activity, understanding there's activity, but what's going on. And then, you know, recently with the different discussions of the business privilege tax and how can we capture those as well. So, you know, spoken previously, we want to gather the facts, and you've spoke exactly at the people I've been talking to, to BLS, to BSP, to gather that information, find the right federal website where these contracts are made, so that we can then pull that information and push it out to our fiscal team to make sure that they can follow up, to make sure that those contracts, those direct contracts, as well as contracts on island, are being made aware of their financial obligation to the island. So that is something I'm working on, and I feel I'm in that position to really start shaking the trees, knocking on the doors, and, you know, looking for those answers. So absolutely, one of the things I'd like to do.
Thank you so much, because, you know, the military buildup is probably going to end in another seven years, and it's important to try and capture what we can before they're gone, and, you know, we don't want to snooze and lose at the end of the day. Now, you said you're meeting with BSP and REVEN Tax and those entities, and you said in your earlier the importance of it. Well, one of the biggest things is the credit rating for Guam, and that information is very instrumental for our credit ratings. So where are we right now today on our credit rating for Guam? What rating are we?
So, the credit rating has always focused on our primary economic drivers, tourism and military. We've been, there was concern raised with our tourism and the recovery not being where it was five years ago, but with the military buildup kind of making up for that economic activity, they felt comfortable that we've been able to balance. We've never had any issues with covering our payments and reporting our financial information. They felt very confident with the economy of Guam, and they are constantly asking us to provide updates on our tourism and what we're doing to bring that back. And so GIDA is working closely with GVB, with the airport, on the steps to bring it back, steps to continue to improve our product, how to bring and attract our visitors through various incentives and tax credit programs. You know, we have those regular meetings and updates, and everybody is aware that strong action is needed in the next couple of months to ensure that, again, yes, we have the buildup, but we need to get that going for our people. So, again, constant communication and deadlines for ourselves is kind of what we've been pushing for in getting our product improved.
The rating that we are today, though, what is that rating? Are we at?
So our rating right now with Moody's is an investment grade for the government of Guam credit, and again, they've recognized our financial recovery, our fiscal discipline, and the reporting ability. So right now, we're an investment grade of, with Moody's, we're B+. And with S&amp;P, we're right below investment grade. I mean, they still want to see the tourism plan, and they recognize the military buildup, but they want to make sure that both of our economic drivers are healthy.
Okay, so we are at a B+ at this point, and then in another area, a little bit below that. So does any of this have to do with our, the plan on doing a land appraisal again to, will that help our grading, or is there any plan to, to re, what is it, reappraise the property?
Property assessment, yes.
Yeah, the assessment.
So we're very clear with them, and they're aware that we do these frequent property assessments, and they understand that this happens. They've seen it before, because I want to say it was about eight years ago that we completed the last assessment, and so they've gone through what is our process. You know, every year, we reassess, people are able to file for any updates, and so the property assessment more than likely should improve, because we've seen a lot of activity, construction, we've seen a lot of new buildings, and so they understand it, they don't see it as a credit risk.
Okay, thank you for that. Also, many times, you know, this legislature, this body loves to have these, you know, reports and assessments being done, and we always throw it to GIDA to do all this work, you know, and find, and it takes a lot. I mean, you need people to really concentrate and do the research on certain things that we need reports on. How many, can you tell me off the top of your head, how many public laws were given to GIDA that requires you to do these assessments and reports without any funding whatsoever?
You know, a lot of the times, the reports given to us by the legislature are in alignment with our economic development initiatives and priorities, so as much as we can, we will generate or gather resources to help support the initiative, to help move it along. We've had at least, at least three or four that have come unfunded, but, you know, we still want to help and assist as we can. And just so you know, where there is a challenge for funding, you know, we're constantly talking to our people to find, you know, is there a grant fund that we can use to help us get some of this information, because again, information gathering of that is very important.
And I recommend moving forward that any time that GIDA's challenged to do something or tasked to do something by legislation, that you do come and testify and request for funding for that. And that, because, you know, many times, I've actually asked GIDA to do some things, but I found the funding for it, and one of the areas that I looked at is the SEDS program that provided money for it. My only concern- My only concern is that while I was looking for this money for the task force for the Guam Memorial Hospital, and the public law passed, the money was reverted somewhere else instead of this task force, and it created its own, you know, group of, and so I think, you know, moving forward, anytime of grants that you have for certain initiatives, investments, whether, or assessments or reports, that it stays in that corner. Because I was very disappointed to see that, that money was moved. I found, what, $1.1 million for a task force, and it was taken away after it was awarded and then given to another project. So appreciate it. If, you know, moving forward, two things, you know, one, making sure you ask the legislature for money if they're going to give you a task, and two, if there is funding, that it does stay in that particular project and not moved. The other one I have regarding, so we finished the rating, the BSP, well, the hospital management report, it was discussed earlier, Tina, and I'd like you to explain that, because I'm sure all my colleagues here are really concerned about that section of it. So the question asked about the report, start from the beginning, how was awarded? Let's begin from the beginning to where we are today, okay? Can you explain that, please?
Yes, absolutely. So the procurement for this came about because the working group, from what I understand, I wasn't directly involved, but I've tried to catch up. And there was the procurement for this to provide a study that could help guide management moving forward. Again, there's a lot of complexities that GMH, there's a lot of challenges, and so getting an independent review of the systems of their programs was requested, you know, again, to move from where we are today, make improvements, and then, you know, get better as we move into a new hospital facility. And, you know, we worked on deliverables, and we worked on what we wanted to see from the report. And we had the professional come out here to do his studies, and he followed that up with, to do his initial interviews, gather some reports, and that was followed up by, you know, dialogue between GMH management and the professional. And so what happened since then is, we did, we did receive a draft report, and we went through the procurement document and said, did he deliver on these? Yes, yes, yes. And then because it was tied to hospital management, we asked them to also look at it and provide feedback and dialogue. And so we've worked, we have since provided that to the board and management. They've looked at it, they've asked for additional clarity, they've asked for more information, they asked for comparables in the US, similar hospital situations. And so, again, this is a way to improve their systems more, and they want to know, you know, they want to know what's happening out there in the industry, specific to their challenges. And so we've, we've met with the hospital, and we've gone through their requests. And so now, at this point, we're going back to the consultant and saying, this was part of your scope, but we want to get the details, we want to get specifics and support of where you're coming from and making these recommendations. And, and again, it's, we want to make sure it's a good report for us to use and to help address all of the issues. So, you know, my apologies. I know, Senator Toulahi, I've tried to provide you that update and let you know where we are. And, and so as soon as that comes out, as soon as we get the product and get the hospital to approve it, we'll certainly get that, get that out to you. Was there anything shopping, shocking? Again, nothing shocking, but they want more comparables of what other places are doing.
So, and Tina, where did the funding come from to hire this individual?
So that was part of our ARPA, ARPA fin appropriation.
Thank you so much, and thank you for answering that question, it's a huge concern. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues to ask some questions that may have. Senator Gom Tautau, you're recognized, sir.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Tina, for being with us today. And full disclosure, I got to work with you when I first worked in the office of the governor, which seemed like a million years ago, but it was starting in 2003. And again, why you'd want to serve, considering your grandkids probably can, or Jesse might need some help with your grandkids, I don't know if he's going to jump out either, he's also retired. But again, thank you, thank you, thank you for continuing your service. I appreciated that the chair had read off the duties of the administrator of GIDEA, and I also appreciated earlier that she read off the duties of the board of the Guam Economic Development Authority. And in all due respect to her and to the committee, I just, I'll say this from my experience, that GIDEA cannot do everything for every single agency in this government. They support them, but I see a lot of times, it's almost put onto GIDEA because the agency is unable to maybe complete a process. And I'm hoping that the administration will see that, because your goals are deep, and I would hope there will be an appreciation for your, what you want to accomplish as the administrator of GIDEA. Which will get to my first question on goal three. You mentioned you want to strengthen GIDEA's role as the central financial manager of the government of Guam by improving and enhancing investor relations. What is getting in the way of that today?
So what we want to do is, we want to make sure that the investors, and a lot of them are in New York, a lot of them are in California, you know, different time zones, we want to make sure that information is readily available. We know they're watching the newspapers, we know they're watching the news, and so we want to make sure they understand that they have questions, they should come to GIDEA. And so we want to make our, for instance, our website more dynamic. We want to post information, you know, when we talk about military buildup, military contracts, we want to be that source for them, which is why it's very important that we, we all come together to make sure that we have the legitimate, reliable source. And then on top of that, we hold, we had our investor conference last May, where they actually came in, and we spoke to them about the different credits. They were able, in one room, come together and say, GPA, we have this question, GWA, port, you know, and, and that was, that's really made a difference for investors, because they don't come to Guam, they don't know us, they just hear about us. Our next challenge, our next goal is to find ways to get them to come and visit Guam, so that they can actually see the development for themselves. Because I think as much as we tell them, as many pictures as we show them, once they come to Guam, it's like, wow, you're doing all this, and, you know, you're able to sustain typhoons, and we see how you're able to do that, you're able to upgrade your infrastructure. You know, and so I think the, you know, that's something that we'd like to do, and they've expressed an interest. So we're trying to find ways to continue that relationship, and that's kind of why we want to strengthen that. The more investors we get interested, the more they're willing to invest, take the chance, and purchase our bonds, and we talk about, you know, the more we're able to then negotiate our interest rates.
No, and I appreciate your candor, and I think, but this seems like this has been a discussion that goes back almost 20 years. I'm hoping that the board and yourself can stop talking about getting the information out and just put your guys' brains to it and we get it done. You guys have such a talented team there, I'm super surprised, we just have never been able to get it, to get that clearinghouse, if you will, of data, because it's all there. I just think we just got to put it together.
You know, we've made a lot of improvements.
Oh, I know.
We have a lot of reports that they rely on.
I get it, no, listen.
I cannot sit still.
No, no, I get it. But I think that for you, and I think that why this is a goal of yours, it's no longer, it's time, no more time talking. It's time to get to it, and that's all I'm saying. I think now that you're the administrator, or will be soon, that I think this might be a doable thing to get accomplished. I also have one question on the QC program. And I asked a QC question in the first, in the first panel with the board, but what do you think is the greatest potential of the current programs in the QC program, which has the greatest potential for expansion for this Guam economy in 2025?
So again, we're, at this day and time, our goal is to strengthen our tourism industry. Our goal is to find ways to attract people to Guam. And so that QC program, we've used for hotels, we want to continue to push for new hotel development, we want to continue to push for new tourist attraction sites, we want to see how we can help them, not only through the QC program, but through the other programs we have. Again, the QC program is for outside investors, but we also want to work with our local investors who want to expand, who want to improve their product, and how can we do that? So we want to use that.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but so you're saying that the single biggest QC you have today remains the tourism QC? I mean, even though we still sit with, you mentioned earlier in your testimony, I was hoping you were going to say something different, because obviously folks have said that the tourism in the military or the federal expenditure, we need to create a new, call it a new driver of our economy. So are you still saying today that it still remains tourism?
That tourism, I mean, for the QC program, that's one thing. The other element we are pushing is the manufacturing, the agriculture, aquaculture, and...
Can you pick one?
Huh?
Pick one, pick one.
Oh, I'd love to, I'd love to get our agriculture industry up and running, to modernize, to be able to, because again, that's so important to sustain us. And so, and the agriculture, aquaculture, you know, it's not, it's QC-driven, but what they need is more innovation, they need more improvement to the system, and so we're using other programs to help grow and develop agriculture.
And I mentioned earlier that we shouldn't always be relying on you to do a lot of things for a lot of people, but I think you mentioned it, that at some point, you will help the others at that point. And I, when I think about the creation of the authority, it was intended to be that way. But I'm hoping that the agencies that are watching today will remember that they have a role and a function to support the people of Guam, they're appointed, their boards come here, they're just as vital, but GIDEA cannot do all of that work for them, they need to at some point take the GIDEA training wheels off and do something to be more self-sufficient. And I just want to say, I, I, just one last thing, I've had a chance in this short tenure to get to work with you already in some public safety issues, again, going back to the fact that we shouldn't have to go to GIDEA for these things, but it just, it speaks to your commitment to not only the people of Guam, but also to driving really what should be economic activity when we really, really, really need it the most. So I know, Madam Chair, I appreciate the time to speak today, and I, and I will vote in the affirmative for your confirmation to the Guam Economic Development Authority. I think the people of Guam need your leadership today, and I appreciate all that you do for the people of Guam. Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Cavill, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Buenos, half a day, again, once again, and thank you for your testimony, Ms. Tina, Ms. Christina Garcia. I'm looking at your packet, and you do have an extensive experience and long time spent in GIDEA, which is actually very essential in continuity. So I'm reviewing your packet, and it's quite impressive, if you ask me, and I know that from, we live in a small community, so I've heard about you and your accomplishments, and I truly appreciate your contribution to our island. I do appreciate that in your testimonies as well, you did talk about goals and priorities. Before I move forward, I kind of wanted to ask you, and what really caught my attention is your goal, to elevate fiscal accountability. Can you please explain further how you wanted to implement this process? Because truth be told, in every agency, I've sat here many times over, and the word accountability and transparency had been taken, used very lightly. And I'd like to know more and hear more about your plans, how you're going to be able to offer that to our community, to the people of Guam.
Okay, thank you, Senator Cavill. You know, I hadn't got to know you, because in my professional life, I've always been a background supporter, a pusher, you know, helper, not out there in the front. And so taking this step has been, you know, a big challenge for me, but I'm very excited to do it. And in taking accountability and being more transparent, I want senators to call me, and I want to return those phone calls. I've asked my team, you know, if we have reports due, please, let's get them updated, please put it out there, and if they have any challenges, let's talk about it. I'm starting to work with my team on SOPs that we can publish on all our programs. We have a good SOP program with our qualifying certificate, we're working, we have an SOP or our disclosure policy, but all the other programs that we work on, I want to make sure that those are available for review. I think in our recent audit, the OPA highlighted that he'd like to see a policy on our charge-offs, and, you know, I agree, that's one of the things we want to get, because it's, we want to sustain GIDEA, we want to make sure that going forward, if someone has stepped out, they can pull up the document and say, okay, this is what we need to do. I want to, that's kind of where we've talked about it, and, you know, I've seen it, that, you know, the, whenever we have SOPs, it really helps to transition people in. We were, I'm aging, and so I want to make sure we get the young in and make sure they understand. So that's kind of where we want to, besides the fiscal disclosures, the reports that we publish, the studies that we publish on our website, we want to make sure that internally GIDEA is also being responsible for all our programs.
Thank you, thank you for your answer. You know, I truly appreciate everything that, a lot of things that I've heard here today, especially in terms of the plans for more investment opportunities for Guam, like the manufacturing, great ideas. However, I do want to see more of little businesses being encouraged in our community. I'll tell you why. Because at this point in time, our tourism is in dire situation, military contracts will end in a couple of years. The only thing that will sustain us here on the local level is to make sure, to ensure that we uplift, we help our people, our community. So moving forward, I'd like to, I guess, add a point six on your goals and your priorities, and I really want to hear on how we're going to help not just our existing businesses on Guam, especially the smaller one, but in the incubation, a robust, a more extensive incubation process, because we do have a lot of skilled and talents here on Guam, and many people don't have the luxury to just open businesses in a heartbeat. But if we can actually help these individuals who are willing to have businesses, that would be great initiative for us. Now on that note, I have one question for you with regards to that initiative, Ms. Tina. In your work managing programs, like the Guam Product Seal and Small Business Grants, how did you ensure fair access and inclusion? how did you ensure fair access and inclusion for underrepresented entrepreneurs?
I love, I love your question because I thoroughly believe that, that small business is the heartbeat of our island and we have to continually support it. And yes, you know, we've, I've talked to our managers and we're continuing to find fundings to help start from the bottom up. You know, we, we start at our village communities and we work to, we're working to improve a third, what do you call it, market setting. You know, the Mingalaw market setting, we've helped them, we've helped them with fixing up the facility a little bit more, providing more space and a more structure for them. We're doing the same for Aggett. Sena, Senah, Aggett and Senahania. So, so you know, starting there. We do have our Guam Product Seal program and we're working to see what more we can do with that as far as outreach. We, they're invited, they're the first on our list for any of our export programs. But then we're also working with corporations like SBDC and GUMA to gather them, to help them, as well as other small businesses. We help to promote GIDEA programs. We have programs for direct loans. We have programs for direct investments. We have programs for loan guarantees. And so my goal is to get, have a stronger outreach to the communities, to the different business communities, to the Korean community and association. And, you know, try and get that word out and let people understand what GIDEA is about. Because, you know, we, we want to push that money out. We don't want to just sit on it. So, so we'll definitely continue to help them. Working with SBDC, we've actually gotten, and GUMA, we've actually gotten a technical assistance grant where we can pay for accounting, for legal work, for business support services, you know. So, so we, we received about half a million to help, help businesses in that area. So, so we're, you know, trying to reach out. But I think I'm going to challenge my team to actual, actually do some village outreach programs, you know, to, to again, get to the grassroots.
I appreciate your, I appreciate your answer and your explanation. I, I truly support that initiative. I think it's a great idea to go village to village. I believe opportunity should be spread out throughout the whole island and not just centered in certain communities. So I am there with you in terms of that initiative and I look forward to hearing more about it. And on that note, I thank you for accepting this appointment. And I look forward to reviewing your packet further. And I, I could see that you already have a big support behind you. So I look forward to working with you, Ms. Garcia. Thank you so much and thank you, Madam Chair.
Very welcome, Senator Cavill. Senator Chulahi, you're recognized.
Sidozmasi, Madam Chair. Thank you, again, Acting Director, for wanting to be doing this on a permanent basis. I am very excited and I'm, I very much agree that someone who's been working at GIDEA for a very long time is very rare, that we have people who've been working in the agencies who become the directors. But I think in this case, it's very fitting and it's, it gives us a lot of excitement, hopefully, yeah, that you're going to be able and free enough to use what you've learned over all these years to really push the limits of GIDEA, right?
Yes, absolutely.
No, no on-the-job training needed, pretty much are hitting the ground running and I really appreciate that. I also appreciate that, you know, what can we do over the years? It's been very easy, always conducive to, to the government's business. I remember as Legislative Council years ago, watching how they would call you when it's time to do bonds and they, and they need answers. And your answers always seemed to me very forthright, no beating around the bush, no hiding the ball, just very direct and, and giving us a sincere picture. Or calling bond counsel when necessary, but that type of thing. So I hope that I'm, I agree with the Chair that transparency and, and you stated it as one of your goals as well. So I, I want to support you in that. I think that's the key for the, all of our government, that if we can get it to be as transparent as possible, if all the people of Guam know everything, they will help you. They will make better decisions, they will collaborate. But it's that hiding the keys, your SOPs, those are instrumental. That's how people are going to feel everything's fair, right? When you publish that out. When, when, when you, I appreciate Joe Diego talking about your leadership as a, as a sibling, excuse me, because I have many and yes, that is actually a real trait. So I appreciate that. And, but when you've been at GIDEA, to your knowledge, has GIDEA ever been under investigation for its disbursement of federal funds, particularly ARPA funds or any of those recent federal funds?
No, we did have an audit by the OPA on, on pushing it out and I think everything came out okay.
Okay. And when the, your announcement was made, there was an article in the paper. They talked about regulatory, Tina's ability to navigate complex regulatory frameworks. I think we've seen that and fostering innovation. And you've repeated that as well. And I think you've given us some of your ideas. And I appreciate that you see the need to, to pivot and to innovate where necessary. I very, very much appreciate that. This article says, "You worked in various roles for 27 years under nine different administrators." I very much appreciate that. I've seen this in, in many government agencies and that's a skill in and of itself, to be able to continue to be very productive and keep your integrity, everything, while you work with all different administrators, all different legislatures, governors. So I just want to encourage you. This is maybe, you know, the end of your career, when however long you determine to serve as, as director. But I'd like to see it end in a stellar way and, and very much transparent and really give us a good ground to go forward, right? With everything that you put and you open and you make it very, very clear for those following you, what we're going to do next. The reason why we asked about, or I asked about this hospital contract is because, you know, if we didn't really need the results, it's not a big thing. But the problem is, I was glad that GIDEA went out for that because GMH did not do that. It was GIDEA who went out to get a consulting contract on GMH. The problem is now GMH is moving forward to hire a CEO. And I want to know what recommendations were made by this consultant regarding GMH before GMH hires a new CEO? Because how are we, how are we going to gauge or the public, how is the public going to gauge whether GMH is getting a CEO that's going to fix its problems or meet what the requirements or not, right? Unless we can see the contract. I also worry on a second basis because of procurement. When the contract says this is your deadline and everybody knows that's kind of the turnover time and the contract did say you're going to get input from the stakeholders, including GMH, this deadline was still in place. So I just worry why we're making a big kind of departure from the deadline without any explanation, except for something that was already required by the contract, that they were going to consult with GMH. And when you said, "We're waiting for GMH's approval", that sounds kind of strange to me too. I'm just going to be frank. It's because we don't want their approval on the consulting contract that says how you're supposed to do things better. I can appreciate that they want details, as you explained. So that makes sense. They want additional details when they say to do it this way. What do they mean by that? How did they do it in other places? That I very much appreciate. So.
And yes, Senator, that's exactly what they're asking for. Because, you know, there are a lot of, you know, suggestions to improve. And, and GMH is now asking for the substance of that suggestion. Is it just, you know, who has done it? I mean, what are they doing nationwide or in other comparable? So, so again, they want to just, you know, be able to say, you know, we can do this and we can turn to this person or this hospital that was successful.
All right. I hope you can understand though, that at the same time, they're going out on a search for somebody who's supposed to hopefully implement what these recommendations are. And I think we, I think the public should know about that before they hire somebody new.
I think, Diego, we're working on trying to get a good response from them, hopefully within the month, if not sooner.
All right, thank you. And then I was looking at an old article just because I wanted to be sure it covered all these bases. But in 2021, the former Congressman, Sen. Nicholas, suggested that GIDEA should have a financial advisor, not just a bond counselor or underwriter. And at that time, I think the director responded that there was an RFP going out. So do, do we have a, that in place? Financial advisor, I think it's called?
Yes, ma'am, we do have a financial advisor that's been helping us with our financings and, and has been helping us with some of the newness in the market that we've been facing. So we've had them in place for three years.
Okay. So this is the one that has a fiduciary duty towards you, GIDEA or Guam, and separate from the bond counsel or the underwriter, correct?
Yes, absolutely. We, we've actually, normally these players get paid out of the bond, but we've actually made direct payments to them in support of what we're looking for.
Okay, great, I appreciate that. And again, I know, like we talked about with the directors, a lot of work, a lot of expectations. I, I just want to make sure where you have discretion, that you're going to push for value for the government. Because, yeah, it's very hard. I know some of the leases are made years ago, but when we look at them now, we, you know, I don't want to be looked at 20 years from now where they say to us, "Why did you do that?", right? "Why didn't you get a better deal?" It's really, it really is very hard, I think, for the next generation when they look at our old deals. And so I've had that experience myself. And so I know you're very aware of that, your board's aware of that. So just please keep it to the front and transparency. Sidozmasi, I really appreciate your work all for, over all these years and all these capacities and your forthrightness with us as we work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very welcome, Senator Chulahi. Just a couple more questions from me. There was an incident at GIDEA a few years back with somebody that was actually inadvertently sent to somebody who was scamming. And I was just wondering, what is the SOPs? Have you put any SOPs so that this does not happen again? And can you explain to the public what, you know, because it wasn't really, you know, I mean, we're looking at technology today. And my concern is that we're going to be, you know, attacked more and more as AI is even moving into that perspective, make it easier to hit our agencies on funds. So can you explain what happened and what the SOPs have been put in place for that?
Yes, absolutely. And again, it did happen about four, about four years ago. And, and again, the, the thought of, of being fished or, you know, this kind of transaction was still very new. And it did come through and money was inadvertently transmitted to someone else and where it was supposed to go to another vendor. And we have since, of course, everything's been reported to the FBI, federal officials, and I believe we're getting some of that back. Right, Bernice? Are we getting some of it back? Yes, we are getting some of it back, I apologize. And, but then in the meantime, we have spoken about making sure that with everything changing and AI in, in all of the, what do you call, internet sales and so on, the only, our best practice, I mean, of course, you know, we've had training for all our, our managers and especially for our accounting department to, to make sure they know what they're looking for. But in the meantime, I've, I've asked our, our IT personnel to look at what is out there because we have to train everyone. We have to make sure that they're aware what to look for and not just us speaking about it. It's got to be formal training, formal, formal exercises so that they, they can be better prepared to handle these requests.
Okay. And I ask that you work closely. Well, hopefully, we'll have the task force, the AI task force up and running so we can provide actually educational information and, and security for all our agencies moving forward. But please keep that in mind as you're growing. And to be able to use AI in a sense that would help you in areas you fall short. It's not to replace, but it's to help areas you fall short in. So the last one is, when you mentioned Diego, it just reminded me of the tax credits and the spreadsheet you'd put together once upon a time when we were doing tax credits. So if we can get a copy of the, the updated for this, because we're going into budget and we want to see how much tax credits for the FY '26 that has been set aside for these credits. So if you can provide that to me.
We'll send that to you.
Yeah, when you get a chance, please, I appreciate it.
Okay.
That being said, thank you again, Tina. I'm so excited for you in that, this capacity, sitting in that capacity, it's just, it's just the right fit. You know, just please keep, keep your morals, ethics and transparency, all that you have been to continue in a new position. Because many times, people change once they get to a higher position and they're, all that is out the door. I don't see that happening in you. And that's why I'm very confident in, in your confirmation is going to go through. So I'll do what I can to get it done as fast as I can, so.
Thank you. And I have all these guys to beat me up if I, if they see me do anything because they're very involved.
Oh, I'd like to thank your family too for allowing her to take this position. Because this, if you thought she was busy before, it's going to double up, you know. So I, I thank the family for allowing her to go forward in this confirmation. And that being said, this public hearing for your confirmation is completed. We're just going to take a one-minute recess to have everyone clear out because we do have another piece of legislation up to listen to and appreciate everyone's time. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'd just like to recognize former GIDEA Administrator, Mel. Thank you so much for being, would you like to say a few things? I'm, I'm so sorry, I should have recognized you.
I highly encourage, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I'm here to provide my full support for all three nominees, Director Park, Director Siska and the nominee, Tina Garcia. They're, they've all been excellent additions to our board, for the board members. And for Tina, she just, she's, she's just a great individual, personally and professionally. It's been my pleasure to work with her over these years. The agency is, couldn't be in more capable hands. Thank you very much.
A very good ending to a great public hearing. So I thank you so much. And we're going to just take a one-minute recess and thank you. Hafaday, thank you for that short recess. The next on the agenda is Bill Number 77-38, which introduced by myself, Senator Telo T. Tidigui. And this led, this bill is a, hold on, let me grab this one. The bill is an act to add a new 10411601, I mean, I'm sorry, let me start that again. An act to add a new 104116.1 to Article 1 of Chapter 104 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Clarifying Real Estate Brokerage Agreement. We don't have anyone here to testify. We have received testimony for this legislation. And I'm just going to open and discuss this bill that was introduced. Okay, one moment, please. Okay. Buenas, Hafaday, everyone. Today, we convened this public hearing to discuss Bill 77-38, an act I introduce to strengthen the consumer protection and bring greater transparency and trust to Guam's real estate industry. Specifically, this measure seeks to require written brokerage agreements to all real estate transactions, whether for sellers, lessers, buyers or leases. The intent of this bill is simple, to create a level playing field by ensuring that clear written agreements are in place before any brokerage surface begins. This promotes transparency, reduces the likelihood of misunderstandings and protects the interests of all parties involved. In the wake of the recent litigation involving the Nation's Association of Realtors, NAR, changes to how real estate transactions are conducted or being made nationwide, the NAR has agreed to certain transaction practices that are the basis for the provisions of Bill 77-38. The bill is intended to create a more transparent transaction for the benefits of consumers. It provides clarity to both home buyers, home sellers and their prospective agents. The end desired results will be a more consumer-friendly and competitive real estate market. This bill doesn't burden, burden our real estate professionals with unnecessary bureaucracy, but it provides them with a uniform, clear framework that enhances professionalism across the industry. It also aligns Guam with practices seen in many US jurisdictions where written brokerage agreements are a standard consumer protection tool. I look forward to moving this bill forward and providing any feedbacks. My office will, will receive these testimonies within the 10 working days. So there is no one here to testify. We did have someone early, I apologize, we did go over schedule from hearing this bill at 11 o'clock. Though we did get testimony from Chris Felix as well as Mr. McDowell, who were here, he was here earlier, Mr. McDowell, but had to leave on a prior engagement. So that being said, I have no questions. Moving forward, that being said, Bill 77-38 COR, which received a fiscal note and there is no, and legal counsel has reviewed it with no amendments. The fiscal note indicates this is administrative in nature. Okay. And I believe we also had sent this out to the Guam Real Estate Association, GAR, to come and testify on this matter. And the bill was also in the, okay, let me pull this. The bill was also in K, published in KUAM on, on Monday, July 14th, as well as for Friday, July 18th, 2025. Okay, that being said, there is no other questions or comments and this concludes our discussion on Bill 77-38. Again, my office will continue, receive testimony on today's hearing of our nominee, nominees of Siska, Mr. Park and of course Tina Garcia for the Guam Economic Development Authority Office. I've given five days' notice for anyone who would like to provide additional testimony. It can be mailed to my office at 238 Archbishop Floor Suite 407 at the DNA Building in Hagatnia. You may also send a written testimony to my office via senatortelot@gmail.com. Thank you for everyone's participation today. Create a great day. The time now is 11:58 AM. This public hearing is now adjourned.